How are you?
There's three. A four. There's four. Yeah, also this one is not going to be a four.
It feels like, you know, twenty-two months. Some days it's weird.
Well, it's a work session, so we do have a four. But it doesn't matter, we're still covered.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're in pretty good shape. One board member, Pierre called and said she's gonna be late. Zubi is online. Anyone else online? Hi, Zubi, good morning. We were expecting some other people. And we have Amy. Cory.
Amy will not, Amy will not be here. She is recovering from.
Something. Okay. All right. Well, welcome all. Thank you for finding this place. That was a challenge. We planned it that way. And we also planned you'd have to search for your chairs. So that, you know, get your, get your mind working. So first, I guess, I will ask for a a quorum, a motion to accept the agenda. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have a motion and it's passed to accept the agenda. As you all have figured out at this point, coming to a different place, this is a different kind of meeting. This is not our usual meetings with presentations and/or approvals of reports, et cetera, et cetera. This is a meeting in which we are going to be talking about the future. And it's going to be a discussion, not a presentation. Vicky La, who is here, some of you may or may not know Vicky, from Acquiring the Dream, is going to be talking after our discussion. She'll be telling us more about acquiring the dream and what their strategies are. But before we get there, we are going to talk about what kind of things you are thinking about for the future. So this is a discussion session. It is brainstorming. It is open. So it's not going to be guided except if I don't like what you say, then I'll guide. But otherwise, it's just gonna be pretty much open. And what we're gonna do to start things off, because this is a kind of a creative thing, we're gonna start by having a little exercise. And the exercise is, in the year 2032, ten years from now, the, the Santa Fe New Mexican newspaper is going to publish a headline. I want to know from you what that headline might say. And what I'm gonna do is, if you would break up into small groups of three people, three or four, just grab some of your neighbors. And you got five minutes to come up with a headline for 2032. And ten, ten words or less. So, go ahead.
Something goes.
I guess we're a group of local economic.
Yeah. Every student that graduated.
Good morning.
Do you want to say they focused on the three or just?
Overall, I, I, I.
Love to see us having success rather than just one.
What do you want to be?
Is it poverty? Is it, you know?
I think for me, it's poverty for sure.
Poverty covers so many areas.
Right. So there's, you know, the journey to say, I'm seeing your goal and believing that community colleges are the instrument to bring people out of poverty than running. Black.
That's pretty good.
I think we're on the same page.
So. Hey, sir. Hello. I've been looking for the address.
We understand.
Yes. So I'm, I'm one of these people that always gets places. And so at twenty-oh, I'm at this traditional address. So anyway, sorry.
That's frustrating. Especially getting planned to be here twenty minutes early.
Well, I just always like to not feel rushed.
So, so you know, Sarah, what we're doing is we're talking about, you know, ten years from now in New Mexico, what it's about to be about the target. And so we've been talking about, about how would be easier. Just because students are thinking of poverty, our students might be something we're thinking about. That's we thought to come to a place where you can call it ten words or less.
Ten words or less, okay. Community colleges.
Impacts community, impacts, is that a great poverty now?
Spilling data.
Every student who entered, who entered, every student who entered SFCC, graduated and escaped poverty, or have a job.
So our, you know, mission is to provide well-paying, engaging jobs for people to be able to support their families.
Yes.
And, you know, I think it even builds on, because what you're doing is really educating people. So you wanna have it that title, right?
Yeah.
That you're giving people the, the skills and the freedom where we're all to be able to have, you know.
Three more minutes.
Then the community college to graduate and. And implement range, high paid jobs.
Yeah. So what about this, every student, emphasis is on skills to be successful in the new economy.
That's true. Because it's not just graduates. Because there's so much emphasis in education now on certificates and.
Yep.
And they are graduates.
I was gonna say, I would get a certificate.
I mean, even like, yeah. When I say graduates, I'm including just those, lots of people who are changing training programs.
Right. Yeah. I think we should.
Yeah. So I didn't, yeah, that's the reason I didn't say graduates in here. I said every student's, emphasis is on skills to be successful in the new economy.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not just gonna say any more things.
I mean, you know, doing that task force makes some sense, more money, but other jobs out there, even more, right? Yeah.
And more, and more engaging.
Yep.
So we work on new collar jobs, which are basically new collar jobs for now to.
Yeah.
Like your ring.
Well, that was easy.
Okay, well, good. Earrings you guys made with the mold of your earrings are so cool. Like.
Oh, the, the yellow monkey.
Glow in the dark.
The glow in the dark, yes. But more cool is my ring, which is designed by a woman in town.
That's great.
Who, so it's the house who was.
Beautiful.
She did not graduate from high school and came to us to study CAD. And we 3D print that.
Wait, that's 3D printed?
Um, the mold is so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It was a new just.
Yeah. And so we have a high resolution. Right, because you see the detail is, is amazing.
I was like, there is. As soon as she took it off, I was like, that's awesome.
Yeah. That is so cool. Yeah.
As you finish preparing your headline, one member of your group can come up and write on the pad of here. So we'll have all the headlines on the pad, so we can see them. And you can also, when, when that person writes the headline, they can also take a little time and talk about it. Okay? So who's ever ready? Come on up.
The conversant and I work together, so we were very nimble.
You know, I, I think your headline is beautiful compared to mine, right, Julie? I've never seen.
It's tricky.
But you're wearing your red sign there and you're wishing such a forsaken Julie.
Oh, we're gonna get it long. Yeah. I didn't do a word check on it. My hand already is so bad. Twenty-five years in the past.
Yeah, you're making, it's like that's all the same. You could write, you know, it's a straight line. Let it all write across.
Yes.
That was always in the cluster. Right? And then I scribble.
And then there's nothing like writing on a board to realize.
It's a headline, not a story.
Nothing. It's just like when you, when you stand in front of thirty. Yeah, exactly.
All right, so our, our headline, for those of you with that, is SFCC Foundation Announces Academic Residential Community, Supporting Students, Staff and Faculty. And the idea is based on some things that some schools have done around the country, where they invest foundation money in, in essentially in either investing or they build real estate assets that, as you know, in this community appreciate faster than the paper that we often have in our portfolio and have the ability to then bring together literally a community, subsidize at low cost or no cost, depending on income, housing for students, even provide for our staff, so that they can afford to live adjacent to their place where they work, and even faculty who may need the income standards. And the idea, of course, is that a community is a community. It brings people together when they're outside of the academic realm to create that kind of synergy. For places like Caltech have done that in Pasadena. Uh, the College of Barry and I came from Florida, invested in a facility adjacent to the main campus for that program. So there's, there's, there's precedence for it. Thank you.
Building social contract.
Yes, and supporting what you hear every time there's a forum in this town, if not the first thing you hear after homelessness, they kind of alternate and are related, is affordable, affordable housing. So the people can afford to get the education, to make the money to afford housing.
That's very good.
Okay. Okay, for us, we really talked about the importance of how the world is really changing and how we're trying to address issues of poverty within our community. And so we talked about, our, our headline is, every student at SFCC learns skills to be successful in the new economy. And so we really realized that there's a lot more than certificates and degrees in the traditional sense going on in the classrooms and in the world, and so we feel like this should be our headline ten years from now.
Okay, great. Other people, other headlines? Folks? You have two packs here still.
Do you want to write in the bottom or let's write any one? Last one, just write it.
Yeah, just write.
So our group talked about having the announcement, and SFCC Mozaica announced a DMS development partnership with Apple. And so there is potential for a partnership at the Higher Education Center. And so we're really excited about having some labs that students can train in on harnessing.
Okay, reaching out.
Yeah.
Apple, good.
Good morning. SFCC ranks in top twenty community colleges nationally for student workforce job. He just kind of speaks words. National news.
Okay, so we have some others. Okay. So someone else missed.
Nationally, hello.
Will we get you ready, Matty? Yes. Yeah, okay, Margaret. So anyone else that you missed?
He refused to write.
That one's online.
We're writing ours right now.
Okay, yeah, we'll get Zubi.
So we had two.
Okay.
Well, her, you know.
No, they're telling. Her teachers.
Of course, being over Shen, it's all gonna be Shen related. So ally health programs, the SFCC meet the needs of northern New Mexico. And so one thing that we're doing that we just got approved is a consortium within, within a community college to be able to provide EMS programming there. So it's just being able to reach out to a little more rural, maybe communities that don't have what they need. That's also related to our EDA grant, where we will be reaching out to communities and putting training in places where they need it. So it's real. It can happen. Now, this other one is real and it can happen, but the first SFCC student joins NASA moon station team. Now, it's hard twenty-three we brought it up, but we actually had a biology student who joined a NASA camp this summer. So she was thrilled and sent pictures and all sorts of fun stuff. So this is all related to things we're actually doing, and it's exciting.
Absolutely. Wonderful. Thank you.
That inspired me for a second, Kevin Costner in Dallas, SFCC film.
Zubi?
Hello.
You want to share with us?
Sure, I, I can't write on the board there, but I put something, I put something in the chat. So I had a couple of them. One is food scarcity. And the, the context for this is that we're in a position where there could be all kinds of climatic changes in California that make it not as great a food producer for the rest of the country. And the Ogallala aquifer is overly tapped out. And so the Midwest is also in danger of not being the food producer we've been relying upon. So food scarcity averted in New Mexico. New Mexico, SFC, NS, MSU partnership prepared local communities for food system collapse. So I think we have a real opportunity, working with partners in the consortium, to help build food systems all across New Mexico, where we, instead of having food deserts, we could potentially be net food producers in New Mexico.
Okay.
Now, that was, I had, I had another one, which was more about, I think the other real big opportunity going on right now is biotechnology going, developing in, in New Mexico. And so, community college tech center drives diversified economy, manufacturing hub raises wages throughout northern New Mexico. And the one, the one caveat I want to say on that is that we've already had two spin-off businesses come out of the Innovation Center at the community college to, who were, were a great, you know, very successful biotechnology companies, both of whom have left the area because our local city and county economic development have not made a business-friendly environment to make them choose to locate in Santa Fe, which was what they wanted to do. So I think we need to do a lot of work with our local officials about if we are developing businesses, how do we make Santa Fe a welcoming place for them?
Okay. Great. Thank you, Zubi. Cory? Do we still have you?
Yes. Hey. So my thought was, community colleges winning the skills race, just in that we're developing skills related to the needs of our local economy. That was my thought.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay. Do we have someone else on here?
Kelly, Trigio.
Okay, Kelly.
Yeah, I'd like to add something here. So along the same lines that Terry was speaking about, I think we need to be continually identifying and addressing the needs of our community. And, and related to that would be in putting effort in understanding the people that we're serving. So I think that's directly related to defining ourselves as a Hispanic-serving institution.
Okay, great. Very good, thank you. So, in case you haven't realized, you have just started cleaning off your, your crystal ball. Because that's what this is about today. It's about a crystal ball. It's not about what we're doing now. It's what we're looking to do, thinking about possibilities and sort of ideas as to what to do. You know, I, I like the idea of talking about NASA. And I was thinking this morning about, indeed, will SFCC have a controlled climate research station on the moon? We could be the first ones up there. Why should we just be producing algae down here? We could do it up there. So, different purpose, different meeting room today. Thanks to Audrey for setting up all this effort here, the room and all the food and, and indeed lunch. And I know you all came only for that reason. But that's why we planned it that way, too. Different format, discussion from you. And fundamentally, Vicky has very kindly agreed to participate with me in facilitating your discussion. She also, at the end of the discussion, will present something about achieving the dream. Some of us know about it, some of us don't. Really, there are three big questions.
Come on up. Do you want to pull up? There is.
Are they?
Do you want to do it that way? Have I get to that? Sometimes it's awkward. People see him.
They could look. But the whole.
Mason? Okay. So we're really talking about a couple of critical questions, and they're, they're kind of global questions. None of them are very specific. So the first one is, where does SFCC fit in the educational metaverse? You know? We gotta think about why, in the world, in the planetary system, where do we fit? That's a big question. Second one is educational issues important. Let's see, can we get the next slide? Oh, yes. Where does SFCC fit in that we have a metaverse out there? Where do we fit in it? And what are our priorities? How do we establish those priorities? The third question is.
One for a laugh.
There. Anyway. The third question is Santa Fe's needs. What are the educational needs in Santa Fe? So three, three areas to think about. The metaverse, where do we fit in that? The Santa Fe, what are the priorities there? And the, yes, educational menu for the needs of 21st century New Mexico and Santa Fe. So it's poking out there. So polish off your, your crystal balls a little bit. And the floor is open. And remember, it's discussion. I'm not gonna tell you. I'm not gonna give you all the answers. And neither will Vicky.
I don't know the answers. If I did, I'd love to, I'd love to share them with you. I think it'd be really helpful, because these are big questions, maybe take a minute. We're gonna do something we like to call Think, Pair, Share. If you've ever used this in a classroom, some of you have, I can see some educators nodding. Okay, so you're gonna think for a minute, jot down sort of your thoughts, and then turn to someone. Hopefully someone that you haven't already talked to this morning. So if you have to get up for a minute, it's gonna be an also opportunity for a little stretch break and have a conversation and share what you each thought, and then we'll share out. So take a, a few minutes to jot down your thoughts and then look. So, take a few minutes to jot down your thoughts, and then look for a partner, hopefully someone you haven't already talked to this morning, or somebody you work with really closely, because it's really nice to have that chair. Okay? And George, feel free to participate. These are your questions discussed. All right? So, a few minutes to think, and we'll clap and jot down a few notes. Hopefully, is everyone online able to see us? Can we just make sure that, we can't see the chat, though. Can you see the chat back there? Okay. So, if you're joining us on Teams, feel free to use the chat to put in your thoughts. Unfortunately, you don't get that richness of working with someone else.
So, I see, I think that, you know, medical concerns?
Place-based.
And then our global work.
So, what do I feel is the, is it muzzy in there?
If you had a question?
So, where do you fit in the metaverse? It's kind of on your agenda. What are the educational needs of Santa Fe? And how are you, your place in the ever-changing educational world, sort of that 21st century mission, and then how you meet the needs of the Santa Fe area specifically? So, thinking big, those dollars and that localism, right? Almost. Yes. The core, but then we didn't really, like...
And can't do that. You can't do that. So, the question is, what are the needs, what are the needs?
So, there's a level two there.
Sure, that, but that is... So, the getting of interest up here, of course, the needs is certainly, within the state, how, for any reason, you know, those places exist, and then, again, what's...
Well, not, not actually, not even far. Like, I don't know, I don't have to hang on to that. I think that's, nature is very coherent. I guess, uh, and I'm sure you'll see, other than reputation, I put that up, and, you know, because, where they're talking about, you know, they're not, they're not...
As now we improve, we certainly, certainly chess is...
Okay, so we'll start, we will start.
Okay, we're going to do now, we're going to share our, so...
Catherine is going to start us.
Okay, now, one thing I will say, Audrey would appreciate it if we, if we did some, if we kept some notes on the charts, just because she's not able to always keep up with the conversation. So, I don't know how you want to do that, or, I am happy to jot down major ideas, okay?
Great, thank you.
I don't want to slow us down too much, but just, so if you think bullet points...
Sure, okay. Stand up. Okay, so, in the metaverse, the idea is that Santa Fe can't be everything to everyone, but there's the idea of how we create relationships that then allow somebody who wants to do something through us to have a partnership, so that idea that there's a facilitation of education, as well as deciding on the priorities of what we offer. And that, to me, really comes down to the, you know, I think there's this expansive thinking, but also the hyper-local. And I think for community colleges, focusing on hyper-local makes a lot of sense in the relationship piece, because what we're seeing now is students really need that more intimate relationship to be successful. So, while having a big systems perspective, the hyper-local is probably where we shine. And then figuring out, what is it that makes Santa Fe Community College shine? You know, we're entering into this chess system, we're competing with online schools with much more resources that can snap up students instantly, so what is the thing that makes people want to be here, and through those facilitated relationships? Did I get it?
I don't know. Tell me about it.
And what is the, how do we determine in terms of priorities? How do we, in fact, determine priorities for Santa Fe Community College? So, we have this metaverse, all these educational opportunities, we have needs out in communities. What needs, what educational needs are we going to address? Nurses? Healthcare? Child care? Lots of possibilities, and thinking about future, what ones are we going to address? And how do we, what's the process that we go through to think about that? To do that? So, that's all we've got.
Okay, let me see if I captured this, and Audrey, this may not really help you, because you might not be able to read my writing. Okay, so, create relationships to support hyper-local, student-focused? Did I capture that?
I think with Dr. Gamble, too, it's the idea that the relationships extend beyond Santa Fe to other institutions.
Yeah, engage other institutions?
Yes. I mean, chess is a great example. You know, here we are, deciding that we're going to have this basic infrastructure with a number of community colleges in the state. Well, that's great. That covers this much. What about the rest of New Mexico? What about the rest of the country? Again, sort of moving beyond the place-based institutions and saying, well, what about all these, these online educational opportunities? How do we relate to them? Do we ignore them? We've got to think about that. They're, they are competing, in some sense, with us. How do we deal with that?
Okay, build on what Santa Fe Community College is already doing, right? We've talked about the strengths, what you're already doing well, right? And then determine priorities, what needs fit with Santa Fe Community College's role. Did that capture, do you think?
Please. Marcus and I have something that I think would dovetail well with that and maybe lead into others.
Okay.
And I'm going to actually draw it, so I would not have to describe, but you can draw.
I'm more than happy, what color?
Uh, I'll be a tomato-chrome. Tell it again. Tell it again in hands or in view.
And people do note that the nuts and the cookies are for your nourishment, and they are guaranteed to sort of help you be more creative, so it's a buildup for lunch.
So, James, some of us can't see the board, so don't forget to describe it also.
And Marcus, feel free to begin describing.
You got it, my friend. So, as Jim is drawing this really, really cool thing right here, what we talked about, and it actually dovetails into exactly what George and Catherine are talking about, is the fact that Santa Fe, New Mexico, it's its own funny little world in a lot of ways. It's not the same needs that, say, students in San Antonio and Texas have, may not necessarily be the solution for students in Santa Fe, New Mexico. So, folks that normally come in with an outsider's perspective, not having an understanding of the community of Santa Fe itself, tend to fail at succeeding in this community, unless you understand also the other side of that. What Jim was talking about, and I really appreciated, and I actually circled it in my notes, is finding that sweet spot between serving both, what are the local needs, but also what are those national needs? Because the two need to talk to each other in order to have a successful institution of higher education. So, what can that look like? At SFCC, we are doing some really good things. All departments are working really hard behind the scenes to help SFCC move forward into that 21st century, have been the best possible college for our students. But, we still have some work to do, because we still see, if we're speaking openly here, there still are some silos at the college, and we want to figure out a way how to close up those silos. And that is something that's very promising, something to be very optimistic about. It's that there are these silos of people working really hard, but that means that there is that opportunity to have all these folks working together for the same goal. Think about it like this, Santa Fe, New Mexico has a whole bunch of great nonprofits, and they are serving a whole variety of needs in this community. However, there are a number of nonprofits that are serving the exact same populations in this community, and what can happen in that case is they begin to cannibalize each other. Suddenly, when they're going out for a grant, if they don't get that grant, it might be because they aren't working together. If maybe three of those nonprofits merged and went out for that grant, it could have been a lot more successful. Think about that, too, in terms of SFCC and our incredible departments. If we all started to work together in a truly strategic way, because we're all doing great work separately, but if we can merge together and find out what that sweet spot is, and Jim is, drew it up there on that piece of paper, how we can get to that sweet spot of meeting both the local and national needs of our students, we could be very successful.
And I would point out that we don't want to exclude those Santa Fe-specific or Santa Fe exceptionalism topics, nor some of the ones that are more global. It's just, this is where we get our biggest value from our limited resources. Zubi, I will try to hold this up for your bit a bit, and hopefully it will not be spectacular failure. I don't, can you see that, sir? So, this is a scheme or framework, a scheme or framework, really, to kind of decide on how to go about these needs assessments, as opposed to, you know, specific needs assessment per se.
You can see it? Come on up. Thank you.
Okay, great. And of course, building on that, and actually Catherine earlier mentioned, one of the determining priorities, one of the issues certainly in Santa Fe and in New Mexico, is language. And thinking about, certainly, Spanish as one language, but also recognizing need of other languages, because we are having a influx, immigration that are using other languages. And how important is that, and how important will it be? I mean, we all know that, just with Spanish, a bilingual person in any field, you name it, is going to be twice as valuable as a person who's monolingual. And how are we dealing with that? And is that going to be more important? And that's sort of part of trying to understand the sweet spot, how do we, how do... How do we, how do we begin to, to select what that sweet spot is? Because to know what the needs are in Santa Fe and New Mexico, what the needs are out there, that's the first part. But once again, that's huge. Then we say, well, how do we fit into that? What should we be doing? And why? And thinking about that over the next couple of years, because in 10 years, you know, we're going to have headlines.
Okay.
Others? Becky, please.
One of the things that I think all community, not all community colleges, but a lot of times colleges struggle with. And it, and it's kind of a, sort of a philosophical thing, sort of a perspective, but it really is real, very, very real. And that is, you know, we have a tendency to say, you know, we're the college, we're full of experts, we know what we should be teaching, we know what we need to be doing, and so we do whatever we want. And we're, and we get very, very disconnected from what we're trying to do. So when you talk about what we should be offering, what we should be doing, what our changing needs are, we really should be flipping that model and that employer should be telling us what we're supposed to be doing. I know that's repulsive to a lot of academics, but I can even remember as an English lit teacher, being talked to before I was going out on the job market about what you need to do to get a job. And so even in that, you know, kind of weird rarefied air, getting a job was central. And so I don't think, I think we have to look at that a lot more from, and employers tell us, but we generally ignore our opinion. And, and that we need to be looking at, so, you know, you go talk to Lilian Notoya at the hospital, and, you know, I might have an idea of what we'd like to provide, and she'll say, no, nurses, 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 nurses. And so that needs to be how we determine what we do. And, you know, when you, when you talk to employers and they say, you're not teaching this and that and the other that we really need in a program for, for us to hire your graduates, we have to respond to that really quickly and not just say, we need to accomplish that. We need to be doing it. I mean, not we, I mean, colleges do it. And, and I think that when you even, you know, the concept of having advisory committees and things, that those need to be genuine, and they need to be with the people from the community that are generally going to tell us what we're not doing right. I mean, it's not all that pleasant sometimes to go to an advisory committee and everybody's like, yeah, they should have to do this. But, you know, it's mostly about them telling us what they need because they want to hire our people. But they want them to be ready, and, and we have to be a lot more receptive to really understanding that and not just kind of listening to it, but not really doing that much about it. And, and that's a whole different mindset that a lot of people go into teaching not to do that because they, they want to split out education and training and, and think that education is something pure. Like people like me that have a Latin pageant. You know, I don't, you know, that was, that was something that happened. There was no plan there. But when you really, you know, when we're talking about solving problems like causing in our area and giving, and making sure that people can, that owning a home can become more affordable, the price of the home is not going to come down. The price of the wage has to go up, or the cutting of the wage has to go up. And so there are a lot of businesses, there's a lot of employment sectors, you know, Santa Fe's pretty industrial, I mean, there's a lot of retail work going on here, and then a lot of government work. And, and that's where most people work. And so when you talk about partnership with industry, we have to also be thinking about, you know, the industries that, first of all, our states have a pretty big plan for what, you know, what they want to focus on to diversify the economy so that we're not totally subject to the oil booms and busts and stuff so much. And, and sometimes we try to align with maybe one or two of those, but not really that much. According to the Economic Development Department's report, nobody except CNN even tries. I don't know that that's fair, but I think Sam Wan does. But I don't think we do that much. I mean, I think we do, I think we're primary in healthcare, and that's really, really, really important, and those are really, really good jobs for the most part. But we need to be looking at that as a whole ecosystem too. And so how do we even get people into those jobs? I mean, there are, how many, what did you say, Linda? I read your.
Six thousand. With nine thousand openings in May on, on different sites in New Mexico, but in your system.
Well, you know, I think there are a lot of people that want to do that, and we, sometimes we make it really hard for them. And, and so they don't make it through there, and they'll end up going to medical assisting or doing something like that. And not that that's a, you know, that is a, you know, honorable occupation and everything, but it doesn't have really the opportunity for upward mobility that regular nursing does. But, you know, really looking at making some changes to our pipeline that we have been just flat out adverse to doing. And it all works together. Sorry, George, I kind of.
Can I?
You like to talk.
And how do we do that? I mean, following up, changing our pipeline, how do we begin to do that? Because again, the future is, it's right there, you know?
Well, I think the development of education pathways need to be looked at again, right? About what we're doing. There's a lot of national research that talks about how DEBIT education and the placement scores are racially biased and socially unjust, and it's inaccurate, for most importantly. And so we are creating systems with a good intention of helping students, but unintentionally hurting students and hurting students from going into these high-income, popular job markets. So I think looking at the DEBIT pathways could really transform the students' opportunity to get to the economic mobility jobs.
But we also need to, back to Becky's point, I've got a advisory committee meeting tomorrow, and one of the things we're going to kind of work on is making sure that we are speaking the same language. Businesses use a different language, unless you have some business background, you don't necessarily fully understand and hear things wrong. We speak a very different language to their ear, and so sometimes we're in the same room with good intent, and we're, we're just not communicating. And that even goes to Josh's point, when we talk about this kind of thing. How do we communicate that to the people that need to hear it and know that they're welcome and who are going to be, who are going to truly help them and help them help themselves?
And, and I would add to that, that what I hear nationwide, because we work with the National Governors Association, is that many companies will fund a program and they'll buy the equipment, they will hire the teachers, they'll pay for everything, and they partner with a community college, and then the student graduates and cannot pass the union exam to get a job. And a, a big one that comes to mind is in aerospace in Tulsa, where they funded for millions of dollars the program and not one student passed the union exam. And if the goal is for people to get a job, how is it that? And, and I don't believe in, as most of you know, in teaching to a test, and we are project-based learning, and I live in a different world, but still you have to instill enough knowledge and skill so that people can pass the test. And I go back to continually, we have a registered apprenticeship with the U.S. Department of Labor, and this model works. And you look at the German model where industry is right in there talking to people about, and it's the communication. And the Tulsa example came out of a roundtable I ran for the Tulsa Chamber of Commerce, and it was the first time that the college heard from the aerospace company that no one passed. And it was like, if it was me, it was my millions of dollars, I would have been in there talking to them and saying, wait a minute, you know, what do we have to do? I'm a lean person, what do we have to do for continuous improvement? How come we're not solving this problem? Instead, they kind of don't want to hurt anyone's feelings, and I think we need much more honest, as you pointed out, honest communication and, and putting our, you know, prejudices aside of, oh, business just wants to make money, or the academics just want to, you know, have fun, and, and bridge that. And I think because I come from industry and I have degrees in education, I kind of bridge that. So our program, I think, is successful because we have that communication. And doesn't it always come back to communication, right?
Well, he who pays the piper gets the call to tune. And if the job, if the goal is to get our students employed, then, then the piper, you know, who's paying, who's going to pay that piper? The objective, not teach the test, teach the objectives and expectations of the employees.
That's right.
I mean, the whole, also go up here.
I have a lot to say as well.
The whole model of higher education, including the Stan, the fall, spring, summer, is an outdated one, right? We have a working adults. I could have not finished my master's or my PhD if I had to quit my job and go to school. Yet we expect our students to do so. And why do we do that? Because it's a model that we've always done, right? And so, I mean, this is where I think really rethinking about training to get the job is so much more important than anything else. Just following that fly that's flying around our world.
Going back to Becky's point about our focus on career development, I think very clear that we don't put a lot of emphasis on it, and we haven't. We have a one-person career office for thousands of students, and there isn't someone actively focused on identifying a career need in the community nationally, much less globally. And with the pandemic, the opportunities for our students to work remotely have expanded significantly, so why do we need to limit them to this market? And I think that's an unfortunate reality of our state, and sometimes we think too small, and the people who come in mean too small for us as a native New Mexican. And I think we need to think bigger. Going back to what George was saying, and so there is no reason that we need to only be focused on employment locally because there are so many more opportunities for students to be exploring. And I'll give an example. I'm working on an internship with the UN on antiquities trafficking. It's remote, it's in Vienna, Austria, if someone wants to go, but they don't have to. And so why should our students not have access to that? Why should only St. John's students have access to it? But if we had someone who was dedicated to that work and going and talking to employers and creating these opportunities, our students would have access to so much more than they even think is possible for them. And so I think we need to think bigger about, yes, they're place bound, but they're not limited in their thinking and their dreaming. And so we need to really, really start dreaming big with them and for them because other people aren't always encouraging that for them. So that's kind of, so again, I think it's so important to look back at career development as being something that's a driver. I was not pleased with the stat in MTV's Dream Presentation of how community colleges aren't achieving upward mobility in the way that we hope that they are, and why is that? And so there are ways we can support this better. And I'm going to go back to this question here on the board. We used to tout having over 160 degrees in certificate as a selling point, and I'm really disturbed by that because you're, and then it contradicts everything we hear from Achieving the Dream in National Research about the cafeteria model. And so we're like, hey, by, we know this is a bad idea, but please choose from what we're on. Instead of really narrowing it down and saying, what can we do really, really well? Have what makes sense for what our students are interested, what our community needs?
And that is such a challenge.
Yeah.
You know, it's so easy, in a sense, to sort of continue to build, but to indeed prioritize, that's a challenge.
Yeah.
You know? How do you do that? You have demand, you have interest, and how do you put those things together with what you are?
And I think there's a really good report that the Chronicle put together called College to Career Pathways, if you all have seen it. And so it's tough, right? We hear like, this is, these are the jobs of the future. We hear that like every crisis. So redo everything you're doing. But I think there are a couple of programs that hold strong, right? And maybe I'm biased, I work for a liberal arts institution. We, our students are capable of doing a lot of things. Maybe there's space for a liberal arts curriculum at St. John's that, or SSCC, sorry, I get all my schools mixed up, that we've not given enough thought to because the liberal arts are dismissed. But I will tell you, in the employer world, they are not being dismissed. And so we really need to pay attention to the value add that exists there because we are vocationally tracked and that's, or, right, we're focused on workforce, and that's great, and there's space for bold. Do we need to be bold? I don't know. Could we be bold? Maybe. But I think, like, we have space to do two things that most schools don't necessarily, don't always focus on. So anyhow, I bet I'm going to stop, but we need more focus on career development, we need fewer programs being offered, and we need somebody who is actively focused on employer relationships.
And I'll just add to that here, because I, I really feel passionate about what you all are seeing right now, and I think Julie and I started to kind of talking a lot about this. It's hard to define who we are when we, right now, I think, don't really know who we're serving. And we have had more out-of-state students, not as transfers, but just as maybe new-time students to SFCC, and we're seeing more of them coming in looking for resources like through the Student Emergency Fund, through online tutoring and what have you. And my first question was, who are you and what are you doing at SFCC? Not that we don't want them, we want them, but I want to know really what is your intent being here? So I see this as a culture shift for our college, for all community colleges, but specifically SFCC. Culture shift for those coming in, how do we shift to meet their needs from out-of-state? And how do we align what their needs are with the businesses where they're at? What is their intent and purpose? And then the culture shift for us here within our community, because we were talking a lot about, we have now erased those boundaries that I think were put there as to, we can't really tap into that area because so-and-so serves or so-and-so serves. Those are no longer, that's no longer the case. And so how do we tap into those communities and offer them an opportunity and a dream but that is aligned with the workforce that is there? And I'm thinking of northern New Mexico, now I'm thinking a little bit smaller, northern New Mexico, if you go all the way up to Lepo and Pudiz there. There might be some medical areas, but guess what? Not all the students want that, and there's so many jobs in that space, and I love that, but that's a gap for all those who can't do it and don't want to do it. So if we educate them, then what is their next step going to be? So while the workforce is telling us these are our needs, we also need to tell them there is a large population who have needs outside of what just those workforce members are telling us right now. So I think it really is finding that balance and understanding that this is going to be a culture shift that we need to be ready to adapt to. So while the 100 degrees may not be good, what is good? And what are they going to walk away with? And how do we help them be successful after that point? We all know that, but I think we're in a challenge, not just us at SFCC, but the state and then the nation, because Julie and I were talking, our people today, society today, are going for low-hanging fruit. They need something fast, not education, they need a job. And when the job is paying $25 an hour that they can get today and not have to wait months to get after they get a credential, I'm sorry, they're going to go for it because they have food on the table that they need to put for their families. So how do we help them remove that need of the $25 an hour to help them get a long-term, two-year degree? Traditional, we're trying to fit that square peg in the round hole. How do we help them understand that in the long run it's going to be good? But not just our traditional age students coming out of high school, our returning students who are kind of trying just being a nimble. And I think that that's a lot of what everyone has said, but also looking at it from a different perspective of balancing the two systems.
Yeah, to build on what your peer said, you know, I mean, the working adults is actually the largest population we're serving, even though we focus on 18 to 24-year-olds, right? And so there's a difference between us offering classes online.
Right.
And having an online program, right? And so like, you know, I went to Carlos', Carlos's high flex classes, I hate to recommend this more to people, because it's like, you need to start charging people. But if you haven't already, I recommend going there, seeing what a high flex classroom could be. That's really the modality of how I think all of our classes should be if you want to keep focusing on few programs that's really designed for working population, right? Because that program, if you're a parent and you had a child situation, I had many situations with my kid where if she wouldn't sleep through the night, couldn't go to class, you know, if it was online, that would have been great, right? And so that's the kind of future that we are actually building, so then you've just got to focus and build on, you know, title five career pathway, guided pathways work guided pathways for working, focusing some of those options. So it's not 160 degrees in programs.
One of the things that Pierre said, that I, as the theme of my school, Liberal Arts, really resonates is that we do need to, I think, unapologetically develop a narrative that pushes back against an overemphasis on technical and career areas. That's a good fit for some. But as we know from at least one, I didn't go to an example this morning, even a Latin major can find employment. And foundational skills in liberal arts are fungible. I didn't know that I would be sitting here 40 years ago when I started college. I was going down a different path. I've been down several, but foundational knowledge is certainly one of them.
And we do hear a lot from our employer partners that they need, they need people with skill, they need people who can communicate. You know, we can teach them how to do this and that and the other, but we can't teach them how to connect with people and how to really.
Problem solve, manage.
I can't tell you the number of employers I talked to who say, I need someone who doesn't just want to follow the trends. In finance, in physics, it's bad industry. I need someone who can think outside of like that very specific training. And so I think that there is space for both types of education. And then it's important to think about the, I think also that the diversity of the workforce is so important. And I keep also thinking about, and I'm just, I'm gonna put this here, I'm not explaining about it, but the generation that we're serving now is so different. And the needs and understanding better with what Gen Z is looking for is really important. They are like, nothing we have.
That's what every generation says.
Yeah. And it's not that long ago that you almost stated that about us, right? But now I have another generation that I get to now, I do like that.
But you know, I think it's almost not just the generation. I think the society has changed, which has changed our mindset and our thinking and our, and our processes and our demands, I think. So I agree that the generation today might be a little different than what we've experienced. But I think any person who walks in the door, sometimes you might be like, okay, I think we can have this conversation before, like maybe five years ago. And now it just like completely has shifted. And where the, how they're thinking about where we need to be or where they want to be and what they want and the demands and the expectations, it has really, I think, and I hate to say the C word and I, I don't know if there was a rule not to say it, but I think COVID has really changed a lot of how we need to adjust in higher education.
And it's changed the way that the students are coming to college, how they're prepared, or not prepared, that we're gonna be dealing with for a long, long time.
I am, I am just trying to quickly, I, I think a lot about, and, and I think forward thinking is defining what a community college student is and how we meet that. Not, we can say like, anyone can come, send up to community college, don't be mine. I can tell you, I have, like as the oldest of 11, I have a million cousins. I have so many cousins that I'm like, let me know, bro, like anything you need, you know? They're enrolled for classes at the community college. Six months later, they're gone. This has happened, this happens in my own family. They don't succeed. They go and they work in the service industry or they work for Parks and Rec or whatever. And this is something that in my own life, when I think about, you know, how do I market to college? Like, how do I get my cousins to graduate? And, and so I think fundamentally, what I'm, what I'm asking too is, we have to kind of decide like, we can talk about certain populations that are already college bound. And they're, but they're different, they have different needs, there are different places on the, that's those hierarchy of means. Didn't think you'd get through today at that much. They, they're, they're, they're students that are hot, maybe, you know, working on different areas of their life. But there are also students in our community that don't identify as in college students whatsoever. And to lump them into one category of prospective students is, we can't be effective. We have to talk to them differently than we do someone who's gonna be a transfer student. And so, you know, and that, that goes into, I was kind of thinking about what Sarah was saying about that partnership with Tulsa. And, you know, in that partnership, I can just see the, you know, the ribbon cuttings and the bubbles and the people feeling really good about themselves. And I kind of think of that as like the lipstick on a big thing. And everyone's feeling good about it and it's not actually working. And, and that happens, that can happen in my area where people ask us to market an aspiration. And it's dangerous because I don't have time in this chair. In my job, you start to see, well, let's be careful here. Let's not promise salaries. Let's not promise greats. And let's not even say great paying jobs here because it might not be true. And, and so to kind of tie it back, you know, I just, I think we're, we're not only facing the challenges our community, we're facing a nationwide trend of kind of a growing on we with higher ed in general. There's the division between people seeing the value of college. We're not headed in the right direction here. And so I think it's like, while, while liberal arts and training don't have to be mutually exclusive, I also have to see, how can we bridge these gaps to make those, those transitions as seamless? And, and that's, that's a tough one. But, you know, we want to serve as many people as possible. And I believe that, you know, that, that we need as an institution to decide like, we can't serve everyone. So who are we gonna serve? We have to, we actually have to confront that as well.
So that's my question. I feel sort of like an outsider looking in because I'm a fundraiser and not an educator. So my question is, do we diversify? Or do we stick to what we do best to sort of our community? And I'm gonna name San Faye. So we need teachers, we need LA Health, we need nurses. We need to go into the state offices and talk to those individuals who are working for $14 an hour. My aunt retired at $17 an hour after 25 years of service at the state library. That is sad. That is sad. We need to go to those places. I have five kids. How many live in the state of New Mexico? Two. How many live in San Faye? Zero. That, that's wrong. I, I would have loved for some of them to stay here closer, but they can't afford to live here. They can't, you know, they all got educations in different places in different ways. We're not keeping our community here. We're not keeping the locals here. And I do appreciate, you know, educating all these individuals from the outside. But I think that if we're gonna be the community's college, we need to focus on our community. Who is our community?
Well, yeah, I'm not. After listening to what everybody's saying here is, you know, just give you about one thing that maybe you all know, which is, we have a lot of high school students that don't go to college. Do we know honestly why they don't come to college? There's, you know, just enormous opportunities, all kinds of resources, you have opportunity scholarship. I mean, it's very low cost to come to college. Why? There's something preventing it. What, what is?
First gen mentality is a big part of it. They, as we said earlier, they do not come from college going back from east. They are, in some cases, are actively discouraged from going to college. And breaking through to that can't start when they get their diploma. It has to start not even in high school. But we were having some conversations recently with our dual credit partners. It has to reach down to middle school level to start showing them that people like them can be like people like us. We're all the same.
But, you know, and I was gonna say, that was really brought up in our pre-apprenticeship program with Santa Fe Indian School. And a little girl spoke at our workforce conference in May here in Santa Fe. And she said, you know, I always thought college was not in the cards for me. And she was one of our star students in, in a 3D printing and CAD design program. And she said, but you know, this class really showed me that I might be able to entrepreneur my way through life. And I thought, what a beautiful use of, of, of a word as a verb. I had not heard it used as a verb before. And she was, it just opened her eyes. And you're right, Jim, it has to start sooner. So we developed with NIST this year an animated teaching program of micro modules and 3D printing for middle school students. And tomorrow, we're teaching the Santa Fe 21st century teachers because I discovered that all of these middle schools, and these are supposed to be the tech schools, have 3D printers and none of the teachers have ever run them. And so they're having a whole one day program of hands on where they're gonna actually run it. But it has to start early and we need those relationships.
And here's an action item. We've been talking about global things and that's important, but this is a specific action item. The deans here have recently come through our exercise with speaking with faculty about their service. I have told my faculty outreach is one of the most important pieces of service to serve in college. But let's be honest, to serve yourself, so you still have a job. Go out, go out to the schools, get invited in. They want people to come.
Oh, they do, yeah.
So, so adjusting the design of our menu. And this is not exactly the menu of courses. This is the, the menu of, the part of the menu that has to do with relationships. How do we, you know, create those really tight bonds with students in high school, the middle schoolers, to get them very comfortable with, with just understanding at minimum? If I didn't, if my parents did go to college and I don't know what the heck that is all about and I don't see myself as a college type, right? Because that's my story, right? I, you know, I, I'm first gen. I, my parents, my dad went to, to Western for a little bit, but then finished his degree. And I was pretty much kind of clueless in terms of what, how to do it. I kind of thought that college is for certain people that, you know, have the means to go and things like that. Working in college now is like, there's all sorts of resources, like enormous resources. But if, if I just knew that, then I could go talk to the foundation and say, I need something, I just need help, please. But I didn't think that was even a possibility. So how can we get these, at least the, the high school students to really have strong bonds? And what I felt guilty about is that we're, we're, to me, it's, you know, we're just sending Marcos to the high school, right? I need to go, I need to go to the high school and create relationships with some students to get them to feel like, hey, they want me there, they care about me, you know? And you're working with them to almost convince them to come to school because they're not. The system's absolutely broken. There are enormous amount of jobs at lab and the workforce jobs. There's teaching jobs. We have vacant, teaching vacancies all over the place. Healthcare jobs all over the place, unfilled. Construction industry is just hurting. Nobody can find jobs and nobody can find employees restaurants. Where's the place for that to happen? And like, how come we're not connected to it? And, and I don't want to criticize because we're supposed to be thinking creatively here, but the Tulsa program is, we gotta acknowledge the problem before we get to resolve anything.
I'd like to add that.
Yeah, I, I just don't, I can't understand. I worked at the legislature, we, the folks there are working on this topic for, that's all they do is work on economic development and workforce. And these issues and education and these, you know, education and college is, and that funding is supposed to solve all the problems. But there's still the problem. And it doesn't seem to, it seems to be getting worse because people, you know, don't value a degree or certification. But I think it's because they perceive that, that, that bachelor's degree is not really that great. But if they understood that if I got a skill in, in some sort of manufacturing and.
And then you get a degree.
And then they can get a degree, but I can get a job with that. Like this is, like you go to the college to just enhance and, and lick yourself out of that difficult situation.
But, but the bachelor's degree still has about a $2 million earning difference across the lifetime of work. And that's what we gotta be part of the narrative. So here's the balance. How much do we respond to change and how much do we derive the change? Because in, in so many cases, we're chasing the change instead of leading it. But we can't. It's arrogant for us to think that we're not.
One thing to keep, one thing to keep in mind about that 20,000 difference still, that's based on historical data, right? And we're not in that world anymore. Like, it's not gonna, like, people could potentially get a certificate or even just a training, not even, micro编程 and coding and out earn a bachelor's degree. So like, if you think about the lifetime, it's the lifetime before internet of things was really predominant. It's not a long, so we're, that, that's sort of a, that data looks back in a very far way. So we gotta think about what is it gonna be going forward to build on what you're saying.
And it matters what you get your degree in. That makes all the difference in the world. A bachelor's degree can be worthless. I have a need to have the bachelor's degree. Sociology is grotesquely underemployed at a college. But if, you know, you have a bachelor's degree in nursing, you know, her sister has a bachelor's degree in nursing and 25 is working for the family.
But I think.
It makes every difference in the world.
I also want to just make sure that we don't lose sight that there is a total, and this is a whole other retreat, George, so you better bring out your calendar. We might need a different. But I, I sincerely want us to be careful in looking at this. There is a social justice equity issue. And we are talking at the table like a bunch of educators. And I respect and value everything that everyone is saying here. But at the end of the day, when you talk to the hitas, when you talk to our tribal people, when you talk, talk to anybody in the classroom, it's not that they don't undervalue, it's that they don't understand because it's a cultural issue. And our families and our familias, we are taught that your family is first, your land, your animals, your this, your that. And while we may have shifted here in this community, that is not the people who we are serving. So I agree that it takes us to go to the schools since elementary to start the conversation. And that's the programs like Enlace and other programs that we have that do. But it can't be one person. And it does take the community to be able to do that, to explain that so they could have aspirations of becoming a nurse and understand that. Mama, I'm a begone, that's another thing. I'm going to be gone for a period of time to go to school, to do the internship. Mama, I'm sorry, don't send me money, which means that that might not be money on the table for the family to be able to eat. The student might not be able to eat. I mean, there's just so much that's involved with this. And I know it's not really where we're at right now, but I don't want us to remove ourselves from the reality of the lives of those whom we serve every single day.
Absolutely, Tommasino. And I just want to jump in really, really quickly to piggyback on Tommasino saying, we're not really competing against, we are, but we're not really competing against CNM and Northern New Mexico College. What we are competing against is poverty. What we are competing against is addiction. What we are competing against is the myth, the culture in our communities that students are not college ready and that students are not college material. What Nick was saying, why aren't more high school students going into college? Given that we have opportunity, given that we have lottery scholarship. If you're a college student in the state of New Mexico, there has never financially been a better time to be a college student. Why are we still not getting them in droves? Another thing to think about, and this is all anecdote, this is not data, but this is just my experience out there on the front lines. And it's heartbreaking, somebody who lives, born and raised in Santa Fe, New Mexico, a first gen college student. When I go to parent nights, and me and my staff have gone to a number of parent nights put on by the public schools, put on by SFCC. We go, put on by nonprofits. And just about every time, regardless of the high school that we go to, the parent night attendance is abysmal. And yes, parents are working, they can't make it. Or there's just that culture of keep, go, heat that collegeism for you, get a job. What's really heartbreaking for me is then, when I go to parent nights in Los Alamos, the lines are out the door, that type of parent engagement. And I just long and wish to have that. So we are competing against that as well, that culture, that generational belief that we are not smart enough to go to college. And I mean, that's a much bigger conversation for another time. But that also, like Tommasino was saying, needs to be addressed. Perfect example, I have a very supportive family, but I'm a first gen college student. And even when I was going for my masters, when I had a big project or an assignment to do on the weekend, say if you're celebrating a birthday or some type of familia get together. say if you're celebrating a birthday or some type of familial get-together, and I would say, God, you know what, I can't make it today because I have homework I have to finish. It's like, keep the line. This is your father's birthday, like, what, you cannot miss your father's birthday. It's like, but I have homework. It's like, we understand, but you still need to be here for your family. We are competing against that more so than any other institution higher education.
My Brazilian family was like that. My Brazilian family was just like that. But to your point, there was a wonderful group in the US called Opportunity at Work, started by a wonderful black man who was in the Obama administration. And his point is that we have to change this model, as you were talking about, for equity, that if you are insisting that somebody stop everything, go to college for four years, that doesn't work for a lot of the diversity that we really want to bring. And I'm in manufacturing where there's no diversity. So, you know, to bring that diversity in, we have to have certificate programs, we have, and there are pathways. So I had a company with 2,000 employees, and all of my operators and technicians, which was probably about a third of our staff, could get a college degree. And these were people who couldn't make it to community college. A lot of, of the Puerto Rican and Brazilian community in New England worked for us. And I think about 98% of them went on to become engineers. And because they come in, and as one of them says, what is more fun every day than working with lasers? And they would get so excited about this, no college degrees, we trained them in-house, I developed the training program. And these people could support their families, but they could go to school nights and go on to something else. So I don't think it's an end-all. I see the work that we're doing on the certificates and the micro credentials as a pathway. It gets people so excited about, wow, I didn't know that I could do this. And, and to one other point that was made, this end of the table, we discovered, in my research with 200 employers, that 95% of the people wanted problem-solving as the skill for employees. And this is for operators and technicians. And our micro-credential program is project-based learning that teaches problem-solving, but we also do stealth liberal arts things. So we have a, they have to create a portfolio. And even though they all want to do it with video, I insist they write, because people can't write anymore. And I insist that they write, and we have a whole digital badge on writing. And so even though it's not a, it's not a liberal arts degree, we need to, in our, in our training programs for employees, we need people who have those kinds of skills, and you can integrate that. And I think we just have to think outside the box. We have to start to really rethink, how do we train people? Sorry.
I have a question, or for George in next retreat. Is there a problem with the narrative that higher ed is the pathway to a better? I'll just leave it there.
Ask the students? One of the things I'm, I'm thinking too about what Sarah just said, one, and one of the things that I've noticed, this is sort of anecdotal, but also not, you know, I can't remember if it was around 2,000 or something, Peter Winograd did a study called Where the Boys Are for UNAM. And they basically talked about this huge group of young men that were 18 to whatever, no, maybe they were like six, they weren't in school and they weren't working. So, and they were, you know, trying to figure out, you know, like, what, what, what they were doing. And, you know, probably some of them were working on some kind of off-book thing. But, you know, when you talk about, I, I think a lot of people don't go to college because they don't want to. I mean, no one is like that, but it's not, it's not, they don't want to. I, I see kids from all ends of the economics spectrum who just don't want to, and for different reasons. But part of the thing, and I'm thinking about, you know, what Sarah does with so much project-based learning, and, you know, kids that think that they don't want to because it's too much work, it's boring, or whatever. And when they just come through our doors at Santa Fe Community College the traditional way, we are going to give them grade 13. I mean, that is what we generally do. And so all the stuff that they were, they thought was so boring in high school, English, math, science, whatever, that's what they get. And so it is no mystery to me at all, that they're like, ugh, they don't want to do it. But if they get something like, you know, they get something like what Sarah is doing. And, and I agree, not everybody wants to go to a Sinfield, not everybody should go into a Sinfield. And when employers tell us, you need to get everybody to go into plumbing, well, why be plumbers? But, but when, you know, when we can have those opportunities, and there's such a broad spectrum of interests that can get, that we can tap into with that kind of project-based learning, and then, yeah, add a little writing in there and those other things. Those, those skills are really important. And I don't think anybody would say liberal arts have no place. But when we expect students to come to us and all of them are supposed to fully appreciate 30 hours of that, they just don't. And that does get into the value of higher education and the fact, the value of a degree. And, and we lose them before they even spend, you know, 10 weeks with us.
And then they come to the college through Marcos and, and others that, that bring them to us, and they may kind of feel the magic and, and feel the excitement. And then they come to us for real once they get through. But I think of Kyle, I'll never forget, standing in the culinary labs with a tour of people, and here's Kyle, and he's like, you know, they blessed me over here when I was in grade school, and I just thought then, you know, at something like 10 years old, or some, very young age, this is what I want to do. And he went through all this education, came to the college, and he did it.
And, and I don't, I don't disrespect the English majors, but it only became interesting to me when I had to, when I was relating to my subject, right? Same thing for math, I love numbers, but stats was the most dry subject I could think about, until I did educational statistics, right? And so I think, we go back to ultimately, like, math, English, and other, other materials, we gotta think about the prereq set problems that we have on campus, right? Because it's keeping us from getting students to learn more interesting things. And people will get more interested in the math and English once they have a reason to be excited about, right? Without throwing them in there.
Well, it makes sense, it, it goes with what they're, you know, oh, I need this to be able to do something in this thing, because it makes sense to them. They've had experience with these, you know, the things that they're there to take, the things that they were interested in.
This speaks to a huge challenge that I'm dealing with right now. And I'm going to be very frank about it.
You've got a lot of challenges to deal with. Sorry. Bless your body.
So, two points. First, for Becky's sake, I want to throw the Latin in. In loco spirit.
Being able to say that I have it.
I, I had to think two years of Latin, so you know. In loco spirit, so that's the solution. I think in some cases, that's in place of the parents. We need to market and enlist our teachers as allies to help them, because those teachers have been to college, they can be that person who may be missing in a first-gen person's life. And maybe that's what we need to do, take some of the, not Marcos, and then this is teachers. But to the issue of developmental ed, I'm working now on committing to the task for recognition placement. I'm also working on getting developmental ed reform in English. My associate dean has been leading and coordinating that in math. And, and I'll, I'll say this as objectively as I can. One of our biggest struggles is changing the mindset of our own faculty, who they do not mean to do harm, that does not mean harm, it's not being done. And changing this mindset is, is a Herculean task.
And what is that mindset?
That mindset, George, is that they believe, well, they will tell us that this is our perjuice, the curriculum is ours, so this is academic freedom, et cetera. And they believe, I do sincerely believe that they feel they're doing what's best. But these are folks, for the most part, a large percentage of whom were not first-gen students. These are people that got the brass rating by virtue of being part of the club, they've got to have a master's, right? They do not understand that, how many students we lose in the developmental sequence. While we're trying to help them be successful college students, it doesn't help if they leave. And if they leave, I tell them, they don't come back. And now you've consigned them and their families to a trajectory that's very different. But I can't, it, it's a challenge. Yash, where did Yash go? I thought Yash is running out. He's supposed to back me up on this. But we look at the data, we show the data, and it's really something, because I'm showing the data to my faculty and they're going, but, but so is, no, anecdotes. This is objective data. And we're changing that, we're trying to change the, the placement process. And I've got people that, well, they'll probably, they'll probably greet me seriously before this is over.
Jim, I can back you up. So when I arrived and when my lab was in trades and not at HEC, on, one of the faculty from the engineering department told me that we could not offer a digital badge in CNC machining, because it takes three semesters of calculus to run a CNC machine. And I said to them, you tell that to those Ford and GM workers from the 50s and 60s and 70s who are making Teamsters union wages with no college. Three semesters of calculus, you need arithmetic, you don't even need math. Yeah, you need, and, and you need, in today's world, because everything is digital, you need some digital skills. But they, all, they're all digital natives, but everybody can look up something online. But I, and I thought, what do you do about, like, the people who used to work in my factory, who loved math, but college wasn't a pathway for them, and excelled in our company as machinists? And I, I was just, yeah, it was a battle. I mean, it was just a battle. And I thought, this is doing a disservice to the people who could become CNC machinists, who probably want to become CNC machinists and love working with their hands, and this is wrong. It's just wrong. I'll back you up.
One remedial. I have been on this floor many years, and for at least two or three presidents back, I have been bringing up the remedial boost. And my own nephew, who stayed with us every summer since he was six years old, and when he graduated from high school in Tombstone, Arizona, I said, come to Santa Fe and live with us on paper college. He went to three semesters and had remedial English, remedial math, and... If, you know, we have to do something now about it. And he wanted to be a criminal justice major, so if he had done something to keep him there on the top, he mined his space. So that's that. I do want to talk about, from my professional perspective, about education's civic responsibility. And I don't know how we integrate that if we're, you know, into career training. But I know that colleges and universities do, and use education as how the government works. And no, these are college students, they have health history. You know, they might know that there's 538 congress and senators, but they don't know how. Oh, is there an election coming up? And, and you know, they don't know about city councils and county commissions and state legislatures, they don't know about boards, and they don't know anything about how their government works, they don't know about voting. And that's because somewhere we are not practical, practical teaching on health. You know, don't teach this crap about, here's how many we have, and do, you know, here's how it really works. Let's have a, a sample of passing a bill in legislature or Congress. Let's do something meaningful to teach people about our civic responsibility. And I don't know how we integrate that if we're focusing on career. Totally supportive of focusing on career, but somehow, I mean, jobs, that sort of, so. I just want to, and maybe be innovative in that area.
These can be working, here's another mindset failure on our part as educators. That's a Western mindset, and that is, things are discreet. Listen last week, I can't cover that in your class, that's my class. And so teaching more broadly across the curriculum, things that are threads like that. For that matter, teaching reading and writing in class, unburden some of this emphasis that is a roadblock, and holding down these ridiculous prereq set barriers, to allow people to get a taste of the real college classes. My youngest son is a Gen Z, and he's a microbiology major, and he was complaining, wow, I took this crappy stupid philosophy class. Let's do part of your Gen N, I know Gen N, and I'm learning. He turned up, he starts telling me how wonderful it is. He's like, did you know this? But it's interesting, because to get a taste of that, it's interesting to me. Maybe some field, what makes a field in college, not in 13th grade. Summer school from 12th grade, you know?
And to go along Linda's point, you know, one of the expectations of the Higher Learning Commission, which accredited us, is that we actually teach civic responsibilities to our students. And so this is an issue that we need to address through our common learning outcomes, right? That that needs to be in there. So I think we need to have that conversation with the faculty about how we're including that in their curriculum, and how we include that on the student affairs side of the house about student support, about how we're including that, because that, that's one of the things they're going to ask us, like, what are you doing? Right? And so I think we need to address that.
You know, it seems that we're, on the one hand, we're talking a lot about what we as educators think we should be doing sort of in the classroom. On the other hand, Tomasina and several others have pointed out, Marcos as well, this issue of what we're competing with. Poverty, ignorance of, you know, very narrow perspectives about the world. You know, certainly civic education. It lead, it leads me to ask a question about, should we as educators, can we also be working to familiarize, to expand the worldview of students? And can that be done? I mean, I know Marcos is doing that, and we can maybe give him a, a larger team of people. But also, in the high schools, I mean, Linda raises the question of civic education. My goodness, shouldn't that be done in high schools? And do we, in other words, maybe need to work more closely with our high schools and maybe middle schools in sort of this expansion of worldview? The world is bigger than, you know, family, and family and history are great, but there are other things as well. And there are other things that are appropriate for you, and not necessarily at the community college. Again, we get back to this issue of simply expanding a worldview rather than recruiting for community college. And should we be doing, should we be engaged in that?
Yeah, something, George, that just made me think about, it ties Tomasina's comment and also Linda's. Gen Z has a huge interest in social justice. Helping empower them to execute on that, as opposed to us being the saviors by being the agents of social justice, maybe it's, maybe a, a hook to bring them in, to give them the tools to be the change agents that they want to be. They're opinionated. They don't often know the, they don't know the letters to follow. They don't know what to do. We can give them that, but can save themselves, and maybe ask them.
So I just want to interject for just a second here. We have a couple people whose voices we haven't heard, and we have some folks online. If we want to give a, just a pause for a second to see if anybody who's online has something they'd like to add. And if there's any voices in the room, I know you've been listening actively, but if there's anything you want to add, just want to make sure you feel like your, your voices are important to this conversation, so. Can we start with the, the teens group? I, I don't know if they've been real active in the chat, if they can still break in. We just can't see them clearly.
Hey, this is Cory, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, so, you know, one of your questions about the metaverse sort of, you know, brought to mind the situation here. And what an important thing it is to engage. And what an important thing it is to engage those people who are out in the metaverse. It's a challenge. And I can see it here that, you know, it's a challenge to keep me engaged. I'm like, I'm losing my engagement. And so, like, it's a challenge for me, but I also could see how it would be a challenge for our students, a challenge for our faculty, that as we move into this sort of virtual class world, remote world, that we make sure and, you know, find ways to do that so that, like, I don't get myself lost. Just a reminder for me, it's a challenge. It's a challenge for the technology to make sure you've set it up in the way that's engaging for everyone. So kind of lecturing myself. That's all I wanted to add.
Cory, this is Todd. It just reminds me during the pandemic when we did that big shift, you know, there were a lot of the conversation was like, well, we're an online college now. Let's, let's show that colleges are online college. And it was like, hold on, you know, and there are models for that.
Yeah.
And, but these things take time, even, even.
Yeah.
The customer service and your help desk being available at different hours than we're used to.
Right.
Part of our DNA, it's a changing of, it's really looking at it through a fresh perspective.
Right. Which, you know, speaking of our help desk being available, one of the things we're looking at is an extended help desk. So to our customers, it would look like the same, the same thing. You're not going to realize that the people aren't our O I T employees, but after hours, our phone would shift to another location. So those are all things that we're working on to help people.
Okay, anyone else in our, in our teens environment that would like to chime in?
I was going to say that I think we have to recognize both technologically and skill-wise, there's a lot of people that are challenged in our community. And it's, it's great when we can provide assistance and training and support to people once they're students. But I think there are people who just never become students because they are fearful of the, of the whole, the challenges that are out there. So I think looking at that, how does that work? And I think also looking at, even for an online class, is there a way that the students can have a classroom here where they can be doing an online class someplace that they know the technology and everything is available and there's potentially support if they are running into trouble? I think those kinds of things we have to look at as we, as we go forward. But I also see the opportunity as being pretty incredible. There are, we have spectacular people in our community, some of them at the college. I think we, we look at people like Sarah Balvert or Amanda Heatherly or Charlie Schultz, who have vast experience, vast experience and notoriety, who can really, who can really bring in actually an international audience. And how do we capture that? How do we, and I think we're, through a lot of kind of collaborations and grant work, we already have a lot of connections. Our algae program is connected and very, very important part of national networks driving the future of algae technologies. Charlie, in our Control Environment Agriculture Program, is among the top three people in the world in his field and lectures all over the world. And so I think that being able to bring in an international audience, but also at the same time recognizing, we want to make sure that as we do that, we, we also make sure that it's really available for our, our local folks. And I'll, I'll say from, from our experiences during, during COVID, a lot of students, especially in things like CEA and algae cultivation, don't have the facilities at home to really fully do everything. I found the same is true in a lot of things, audio production. Many people don't have the computers at home that can, that can handle some of the, some of the programs that you have to run in order to, to do that. So we have to figure out, when we're not in COVID, how do we do things online but still make it so that there is an on-campus presence and availability and managing? I think that we're doing, technologically, we're doing a good job of creating the technological resources on campus to be able to have these hybrid things. And it's just a matter of implementation of how do we, how do we move that forward?
Thank you. Anyone else that, I'm not sure who, I'm not sure who's still out there in the virtual world. So is there anyone else out there who would like to chime in?
No, it's just Dube and I at this point.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else in the room who hasn't had a chance to voice their opinion and would like to chime in?
I just wanted to bring up one other point about the question about who isn't coming to college in New Mexico. You know, we're, we're in such a rural area, even though we focus so much on Santa Fe and what's happening in Santa Fe in terms of jobs and, you know, and Albuquerque in terms of jobs. But there's all these rural communities out there where there are kids who think, why do I go to college? Because I want to live in my community and there's nothing, there's nothing in my community that I can do with a college degree. So why even bother? You know, I have a niece, like Linda was saying, I have a niece who lives in Questa. What's Lynn in Questa? And I've said, you know, come live with me and go to the Santa Fe Community College. And she's like, why? But I think, you know, if we're looking to the future and we're looking at the opportunities that are going to be out there for remote jobs, like you mentioned, you know, those are the kinds of things that we could be training people in rural, rural communities to do in the future, those kinds of things. And then also doing other kinds of rural economic development that are going to give them the opportunity to learn, to be educated, but to also stay home where they want to be.
Oh, me? Yeah, so I, you know, I have a couple things to share. I've been listening to everyone, and I resonate with everything that everybody has said. Either I personally have those experiences or, you know, I've brought people to Tomasina to try to get them enrolled. And, you know, basically, it's, I realized it's going to take him and it's still, it might drop out, like Linda's niece and everybody else, right? So it is a big challenge, and we have big challenges ahead of us. Personally, myself, I actually, I come from a family that went to college. And I personally couldn't get there myself. I actually had to kind of back into it by getting a temporary degree and then realizing, oh, I could do this. I scored super high in math, right? Even I still couldn't get there. So I, we just have so many challenges. And what I ended up thinking about, but I told George, I just listened, I wouldn't move to solving problems right away, is, so, but what I think about when I listen to everyone is how do we link this all up into kind of a cohesive strategy that can actually solve so many of those problems? And that's, you know, I'm trying not to go there first, trying to listen. And, but there are so many challenges. And so how do we become kind of the agile institution of the future that can actually do these different things? Whether it's getting faculty out there, supporting Marcos, or even us, or everybody, right? Or, you know, developing these credentials where we can bring in people who are much like me, that didn't want a graduate degree. You know, I was a single mom, had no money. There's no way I could have committed my life to even two years of a degree. Now I have multiple degrees, but I started as a farrier in the back of my truck with my kids in the bed in the truck where they'd be sick, so I could make money. And then I had to pursue a degree. So, I mean, there's just so many challenges. But anyway, so that's my thoughts.
I'm going to say the most like Pollyanna-like annoying thing, but I see these as opportunities. And do I just choose to, I like, hell, I'm putting on my rose-colored glasses through some of these things because they are daunting. But it's like, or maybe it's the marker me that sees this as, this is market share, you know? And I think that's, you know, how we get there is we, these are people that we can serve. They're out there, they're here, you know, they are there. We should have figured it out. So Pollyanna thing will work, but.
That's what it's about, optimism. Go ahead.
I wanted to add something when Nick was talking a while ago. So unfortunately, this is derailing a little bit. But I've been doing a tour of talking to community partners as we're launching this Supporting Student Parents Initiative. And I would say that overall, in talking to the community partners, the reception is lukewarm. They're not referring their students to us. Those nonprofit partnerships are not there. They feel like the barriers that the institution has put up are too much for the people they're serving. And so I think when we're looking at all of these issues, we also really need to focus in on those community relationships. Because when you're talking about the perception of who can go to college, those community relationships are the people influencing that Santa Fe Community College is not for them. And so as we're building this, I think really keeping that in mind with our community outreach and partnerships and connection because that's part of the whole ecosystem. And I think sometimes we can get derailed into our degrees and our focus, but realizing that, like, Youth Works has a whole population there. But they're doing their own construction program because they feel like ours isn't serving their needs. And so, and I know the story about the bazillion nonprofits in Santa Fe, and I think that's true. So we have to strategically choose our partners, but, but really making sure that the community part of the community college is part of the foundation we're building. I would like to see, because as I'm trying to build those relationships, I'm realizing there's a lot of work to be done.
So I think at the bottom, and, you know, there are, when we talk about not being accessible to the community, and this is the most frustrating thing to me about what we do here. And that is that, you know, we make everybody who comes to our door take a placement test. Ninety percent of the people who take that test tested developmental English reading or math. Ninety percent.
Whoa.
And so I am not willing to say that Santa Fe is a dumber town than the rest of, than the rest of the state and that people just, you know, they're, they're not ready. So we have, you know, we have to take off that requirement that we, that people have to take the placement test and that they have to go and placement test places then. Because it's always going to place them in developmental.
Okay, you're the president, take it off.
We are. Here's one thing that's going to happen, and people may not, you know, I know this paper figured it out, but we are taking it off. It's coming off right away. So there's a difference. The faculty is responsible for curriculum. I am not going to go in and reinvent what developmental education looks like. They are doing that, they're doing the fine job at it. But the placement scores are institutional. We have verified that with H L C, this is very recent, but that's not there for me. I mean, what, what's happening is that people are able to, like, select students out of their classes so that it's not about them being successful, it's about being able to have really good students in your class and control that as much as you can. I have done that. I understand how, and I know the reasons for it. But we're, you know, so what happens, and I'm going to use, Yash, that program that you were kind of directing that. E O I F. The E O I F group. So we took a cohort of young parents that we put into a healthcare pipeline. But of course, every one of them tested into multiple layers of developmental education. Guess where they are?
Gone.
Gone.
Yep.
Gone. And it was set up as a, it was following the model of best practices for wraparound services that have been replicated countless times across the country. So it's not like we just had some harebrained idea that may or may not work. It works everywhere, but not for students who are taking developmental classes because there is no supportive model that keeps somebody going in three semesters of developmental, I'm not caring. My filter's going to come off.
I think, you know, there's a lot of passion around that, but we are moving now into solutions, and I think that's, that's fine. We had a lot of solutions.
It's a pretty fixable thing.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. My college went through that, so I'm more than happy to share the horror stories. But just knowing those placement scores come up, there's going to be a storm. You know, there's going to be a storm. We have to be very.
There already is.
What's going to happen as we enter into chess? So we're the only college that does this. Our students are going to be co-enrolled with every other college that's in chess. So why in the world would somebody choose to go to Santa Fe Community College when you've got to take four semesters of developmental English? When they could go to CNN, Clovis, San Juan, you get in, you just start growing.
And from a resource perspective, English as a whole, including DEBB, which is majority of the word, is the third highest funded programs at H E C. Right? So imagine what we could do in terms of starting new programs if we weren't focusing so much on our resources in DEBB.
And what's the, what's the demographics of the students that are in those courses?
Predominantly students of color, more than white students, which is a real issue.
Although I'll say.
Cross the border, that's true. Cross the country, that's true.
But it's even, it's even our, our white students. I would tell you, I'd bet you $100, seriously, if we gave both the English and math placement tests to people in this room, they would be well on the high side, well on the high side of half we would place into.
I'm serious.
I'm worried about myself.
Oh, yeah. I'll tell you, I'm going to be happy in that math for sure because I don't remember those formulas anymore. I got to look it up.
Well, that's often a problem.
And it's often a language barrier.
They have residents that get in middle school and they haven't had sense. And that's the test, that's where the test starts.
And I'll just say this really quickly, I know we're beating a dead horse with this, but I think it's important. I've shared this with many colleagues, but I've never shared this with the board. So about five years ago, Margaret and I worked really hard on creating a partnership with the Santa Fe County, with Santa Fe County employees. And the Santa Fe County employees were really interested in doing pathways to get their employees certified. And the great thing about these was that Santa Fe County was going to pay for everything. They paid for all tuition, all fees. They were even doing these classes on company time. We were doing them at the H E C, so it was a centralized location, and it was in the middle of the day once a week. And we had a business pathway that was the most popular. And we had about 40 students in this cohort, 40 working adults. Many of them had never been to college before, or it had been a long, long time since they had been. The first couple of classes did not require prerequisites. And guess what? They were very successful in those classes, overwhelmingly so, A's and B's. And they were very engaged and excited about continuing so that they could complete and have that better opportunity for a better paying position in their job. What happened was, the next set of classes required prerequisites. So we went out, kind of like we do with our ticket to college, and we proctored and helped out and gave them their actu placeur tests. Forty employees, I still remember this. Thirty-seven of those 40 employees who had already proven that they could be successful in the first two classes all tested into English 109 or below. And only three were at English 1110. We went to the chair of the English Language Department at the time, and we asked if we could waive that prerequisite so these students could continue. The chair, I will not say who it was, but the chair said that.
Was it Margaret?
Margaret was.
Margaret was here. And the chair said, and I, whoa, if you waive the prerequisite for these students, I will quit my job today. So we. Yeah, absolutely. So, long story short, we had to go back to the H R director who was helping us with this at the county and say, unfortunately, these students cannot take these classes. They're going to have to take the class, the English classes that they tested into. You know what happened? And I don't blame them. Well, not only did they drop out of the program, they went to Robert and Ayah, New Mexico Highlands University. Tomasina was there at that time.
Tomasina actually.
Yes, so it's Tomasina. And you know what happened? They waived the prerequisite, and guess what? They all went to Highlands to complete.
And this is why Catherine is running into problems with community partners.
Yes.
Yeah.
So are we done with that then? I'm going to be called a dictator, but.
That's okay.
If there's a board directive.
I, yeah, I think.
And I'm a bad dictator. And Margaret, she's just mean.
I am dictatorial, in case you aren't.
Oh, stop.
Then black and white.
I want to say that I read something about California where they actually test law saying that these things are not.
Florida, many other states, Indiana, Ivy Tech. It is. I think I've seen that shit.
There's no entrances. Whatever.
No, no, there's no double lane. Yeah. Well, New Mexico is almost dealing with something very similar with the Yasi versus Martinez.
That's right.
And so this is something that's being handled within the public school district right now, but it's, it's already, I'm committed for AGAC, and we're already discussing it at higher education level. And so it's, it's becoming a major issue. And so I think we could be, you know, really running a good game in, in the sense of addressing this issue immediately before it comes up to that level.
Yeah, it would be better to do it ourselves than to be forced to do it after we've watched, you know, our enrollment get totally decimated or something, because everyone's figured it's out instantly.
So one other college is like I'm doing, most of them?
None of them.
Nobody else is doing it, so not.
So CNN, the government is there?
Not at the level of the media.
So what we do is if the placement score is 130 and you get 129, you're going to developmental math. So people have a placement test sometimes, but it's like a guideline. I don't think San Juan even uses it anymore. Clovis uses it as a guideline. What they've done too is they've gotten rid of the whole sequence of developmental classes. So you will, at worst, go into a college level class with a developmental support on the side. And so then you're, and, and so that doesn't eliminate you from taking the other classes that have that English prerequisite. So because of the English prerequisite right now, you can't take history, you can't take science, you can't take anything. So you're all done.
Except, except for the developmental.
Terry, how do you, can you share how you deal with that? Because you're, you have so many like standards, the influx and all these things you have to really manage.
So I think it depends on where you're starting from. So, for example, none of my survey classes, intro to health careers, medical terminology, CNA, none of them have prerequisites, period, end of sentence. They can get in those classes, they can do those things, they exposure to those things without any prerequisites. You're right, faculty push that hard, hard. Whenever you're saying, hey, we need to talk about this, we need to talk about these minimums that we're forcing our students to do. Well.
Yeah.
No, I heard this last week. Are we just going down the lowest common denominator? Are we dumbing down our curriculum? What?
Yeah.
No, no, we're not. So, you have to start at some place, but then, you wanna get to a place where they actually are passing their certification exam, right? So you have to get them there. We spend so much time with our students getting them there. That's, so whether it's in nursing, EMSI, whether it's, whether it's medical assisting, where that is kind of like where we get them in the door and walk them through and hold their hands, literally, hold their hands. I think we've been working on one student since May to get their immunizations to us. So if you're thinking about background services, I'm telling you, we're doing it. So it's a requirement, it's not just an academic requirement, it's, what does this student mean? What does his mom mean?
Right.
What does this employee mean?
Right.
Where are they at? We had a student who hit a deer on the way to school the other day. And the director of that program, and she's a new director, I have a lot of new directors, called me and said, Terry, what can we do for her? I'm like, well, is she okay? Number one, is she okay? But it was, it wasn't, oh, wait. Like, is she supposed to play as a student in class? And she's in class. It was immediate, what can we do? So, you're shifting the framework. Now, that's healthcare. I'm a nurse.
Yeah.
So you look at a person not as an academic man, or not as, you look at them as who they are, and you're gonna look at them holistically. And it may be cultural, maybe there may be cultural relevance, there may be individual relevance. I was a single parent going through college, I absolutely understand what that's like. I know what it's like when your mother's like, Terry, you gotta come get your kids. And I'm like, Mom, I just worked a twelve hour shift. And she's like, you gotta come get your kid, she hasn't aired it yet. I'm like, okay, I'm gonna go get my kid, and then, then I'll go to school and do everything else I need to do. I think those are conversations that people aren't having. When you sit and talk to a student as an individual. And that's huge. That's not, that's not a minor thing of what our programs are doing. It's a major thing of what they're doing. So, you're right, it's not easy. And getting them there, sometimes it's really difficult. And there may be barriers that we can't address, or we can't assist with, that is huge. So what's it look like? And it's different for every program and for every student. It may be getting them on a CNC machine so they get excited about something. It may be teaching them how to take a blood pressure so they get excited about something, they actually feel somebody's goals. It doesn't have to be getting an A in English, right?
Right.
And not, not that I think that that's a bad thing, it isn't. So, really, I can talk with passion about supporting students, because I think it's truly one of those things we do. How do we institutionalize that?
Right, those are things we need to be supporting financially, as we need to.
Yes.
And Catherine is bringing in tons of money for students' experience. So that we can, you know, focus on being able to provide childcare and, and to help them. To, to look at student parents as a group that had, that we should be focusing on with supportive services and all the kinds of things that we need, so that when those things happen, you don't have to drop out, or you don't have to leave.
And, and to build on that, you know, but the money is only the one side, right? We also need to work institutionally to change people's mindset about how we're changing our systems. What are we doing to change our, how our faculty members, including adjunct faculty members, about how we're talking about it? Because I think, I do believe a lot of, a lot of the people on campus are very understanding. But I think we have a huge gap in terms of training adjunct faculties, members about, okay, given the half marks classes are taught by adjuncts, what are we doing in that sense in terms of professional development, uh, to help them understand that these are individuals with multiple lives, right? Like, I understand you might have been okay, but times are different. Or maybe these people were not, were, you know, having more challenges than you had, so what can we do?
And I don't think it's just the adjuncts.
No, I don't think it's just the adjuncts, but.
But many of the adjuncts do teach at, at the upper division level. And, and so Josh's point is, is a good one, there's a lot of, I think, proof from improving in our professional development, in our expectation, communication, right? But getting to parents coming, we've gotta get to a point where we can, at least across the gen ed, if not more widely, have reading, writing, and skill buildings across the grid. And not just on the goodwill of the individual faculty, but maybe the institution on that order. Now, you know that people want extra for it, or want whatever, but we've gotta do that. This isn't that kind of school, we need school people.
Yeah, and also, you know, given that we are paying so much more for full-time faculty members, it's about like, where do you wanna build that relationship and support early on, right? So I think what Jim, what you talked about there makes most, most sense.
I would like to not just focus on faculty, and you need to be campus wide. A student walks in and grab them in, and where do they need to go, or I place a phone call, or I need whatever. That has to be a process. It has to not just work, everybody who works there, and I see a lot of that not happening. And that has to be a complete shift of focus.
Well, it seems to me we have identified all the problems, and we have started to resolve them.
Oh, he's an address, sorry.
I think it's, it's really been great to hear a variety of views regarding a whole range of issues. And clearly, some very troubling or very challenging issues. Vicky has agreed to present something about achieving the dream and their vision, her vision, of tackling some of those, some of those issues. So, I don't know what we're gonna do with lunch, it looks like we have lunch in front of us, but.
Working lunch is fine with me.
Okay, so we'll have a working lunch. And when she finishes, we can go outside as well.
Okay, so before I start, let's, everybody stand up.
Thank you.
Stand up. Take a little chair, stretch if you need a quick break. Maybe let's just take a five minute, like, break, and then, and then we'll, we'll talk about what achieving the dream has been.
So nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, sir. And we're, we're feeling.
I was glad of this. And I was probably less than my teacher.
Ten years.
This one for all lowercase.
They're like, they're isolating, that's a lot of. You know, even in the next time, that's what we have.
But that, that's, that's even beyond the barriers of placement. It's a stigma. We're good enough to give credit for that, but we're not good enough for them to cheer you later, it's very, very hard.
Okay, yeah, 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 I saw that.
Sorry. Rather than, rather than putting it all on Becky, they.
Exactly, exactly. There's a whole process to it, you know.
So, I think that training. One of those things, so.
So, where is, from your perspective, where do you, yeah, because you know, see.
I don't see it.
Not at all.
There needs to be so much. So it's just one of those people. It's really, it's. And to me, whatever.
Yeah. You wanna have interest, what is what you get, sometimes it's just really.
My beginning. And he makes it like a more. That's all they would get. Like, you know. And, and so, you know, I started, well, after, it's a very after, you guys get rid of all of, oh, you're.
You know, thankfully, a lot of it's still.
Yeah, it's not, you guys, but it's all the curriculum gets flipped, so that.
As much as you can.
You guys can play with the education. They've lost every potential teacher. I've been fighting with the.
Right. Except for our transfer stuff.
I mean, you guys, we cheer with that.
Well, his. Now, it's a different challenge.
So, if you want to, so you're still there.
I'm not gonna be the one where when I'm.
But you have students. Didn't you remember that? Did you?
Yeah, I've been having. I can show spray on my nerve. And so. Oh, you got the same thing I did. Yeah, that's good, right?
Yeah. This kind of breaks me out when I pulled it out, I was like, what is this? But now I see it is.
Right?
And then this is. That's the beach, maybe? Is that what that is? I was gonna ask her. Hi.
Good to meet you.
It's. Sarah. Higher education. It's there. I just don't. So I'm just saying that you know, it's.
Yeah, she has a contract with the public. She has. Trying to get.
I was not. I'm sure. A lot higher to get to. We're just a partner in there. Oh, that's.
It's just located. Looked at that location. Yeah, and we have shifted. We just. Oh, sorry, yeah.
Right. So do other colleges have a program there?
It's.
Okay, I want to be mindful of our time. So. We can really. I know there's good conversation going on, so we all have a chance to hopefully have some conversation at the end. I want to make sure we leave some time for that. So. We just have a little group in the back.
You problem, you problem solvers are dead there.
I'm not a problem solver, anything.
We did a lot of great problems solving. So first of all, I want to thank you so much for asking me to join you. Some of you may know that Gash and I did some work together when he was working, doing some work as a coach for Achieving the Dream. So a little bit about me, I am a contract employee for Achieving the Dream now. I retired from my full-time job just about a year ago. I gotta tell you, great feeling. And so I knew this for a part. So I was the Dean of Student Success at Northeast Wisconsin Technical College in Green Bay, Wisconsin. I was, I was there at the college for about 12 years. I also worked on the active and exciting side of the house. I entered the whole higher ed era, area by, as a grant writer, project manager. So I have a whole kind of breadth of experience across the college that I bring. But since I've been working for Achieving the Dream, I've really had an opportunity to learn a lot about what other colleges are doing. So I worked with five colleges in Tennessee. Some of you may know the whole state of Tennessee, all of their community colleges and technical colleges are part of the network. I worked with a college in Mississippi, Ohio, and one in Kentucky, and now New Mexico, which I have to say, thank you so much for the beautiful weather and the green chili. We love it here. We've been, my husband used to live here a million years ago. B V, we call it before Vicki. And then, and so we have, we've had a chance to come back this a couple of times. So we're enjoying it and I appreciate that. So one thing I want to say, great, rich conversation. One of the things you might consider doing as a college and a board is a, is a good read of a book called Becoming a Student Ready College. Some of you may know that, right? Some of you do, some of you already lived that philosophy, but you know, it's also very difficult to. If you think about Amarillo College in Texas, they're a Liam Meyer Austin Board running college. Their president always says, you gotta love the students you've got, right? You gotta love the students you have, not the ones you wish you had. Had this conversation a lot with faculty when we went through our own multiple mentors and how we eliminated many of our development or education requirements at our college. So I think that just, this is, just as I'm listening to that sort of big barrier that you're facing, I think that it's really something we could consider doing with the whole group. It really does help you understand sort of how you think about students first. We all say we do, sometimes we don't. Becoming a student ready college, and I can send that reference to you if you don't have it. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about Achieving the Dream. Achieving the Dream, how many people know something about Achieving the Dream that are in there? Okay, so you're in Network College, did you know you were in Network College? Okay. All right. So Achieving the Dream is a network, it's not a movement, it's not a sort of an initiative. It really is a network of colleges. They are running from the field and so they revise and redesign and work according to what they're learning and how the field is changing. So really this is their vision, achieving anti-racist, equitable, and economically vibrant communities. Really important and central. I heard a lot about that this morning, so I think you guys are not going to have any problem understanding that. So we, you talked a little bit about this context already. I wanted to just share a little bit about what's happening across the sectors and across almost all states. And this is since the beginning of the pandemic. So public two-year college enrollments are down about 13%. You're down about 24% according to Yasha's figures. So can you help hang out with that? Thirty percent, uh, down 30% overall in Nance. Not 30% of the 24. I want to make sure that that's right. Data is really important to the way Achieving the Dream does its work as well. So you're not a micrologist. Enrollments are down in this sector in all the two states. The largest enrollment declines are 18 to 24. And in all of higher ed, males make up for 71% of the decline. So that disparity in male is real and it's real across the all sectors. Whoops. How come I'm going? Okay. Whoops. I'm sorry, not really good at doing this. Okay. So the research across the board in Y males, they're less likely to graduate from high school. Nine, nine percentage points gap. I want to tell you a story about a colleague, a colleague of mine shared that a college that she's working with decided that they were going to go out and interview their employers. Much as you're talking about getting feedback from employers about how they could help get folks into college, right? Some working at entry level jobs. And one of the surprising things they found is that a lot of their employees did not have a GED or a high school diploma. So you think about what happened during the pandemic to your students, think about what happened during the pandemic to high school students. And how many of those people did not complete? And that is a barrier now, right? That's really important to think about and, and look at. So that's, that, that was really, I don't mean to me, because I can't remember what the stats were, but they were super high. They have a GED completion program at their, at their college, so they were able to ramp that up. You may have a partner in a community that's doing now already. Those are the, some opportunities. So Y males don't see the value in the college, nothing new that are things that you have already said, they need to work, right? And they, they, and I would say this is really true especially for students of color and depending a lot on the school district that they graduated from. They haven't had a great experience in K-12. The educational institution itself has not been something that embraced them, made them feel important or welcome. And so, hey, you're part of the system, right? So that's part of the stigma that. Okay. So this is really, I know you got this in advance, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but this is really interesting to me that, that, that the mission of the public two-year institutions from 1947 really hasn't changed very much, has it? Still looking at being integrated to communities, creating a broad portfolio of programs, aligning of high schools for seamless transfers, some of which we have done, some of which we haven't done. Being affordable, being accessible. I'm really sorry, I will get this figured out by the end.
Do you want to do it?
Well. I want you to. There you go. Okay, okay. Double the college loan rate, close equity gaps. And when you think about equity, it's not only race, ethnicity, you want to think about gender. You can think about socioeconomic status, you can think about religion, you can think about part-time versus full-time. You can look at age, there's always to think about how are students doing, right? What does equity mean? So Karen Stout, who's the ATD President, CEO, is just a brilliant thinker and one of those people that I admire a great deal. It's really talking about the fact that the narrative about higher education is that it serves as the most direct pathway to a better life, right? And especially for community colleges, because we serve the most diverse populations. And if you want to go to the next slide. I think as somebody mentioned, disappointingly true, it's not happening the way that we hope, right? Or the way that we think and why we wish. Some colleges are doing a really good job of launching students. Again, it's so important that program, what program they're picking. But overall, community colleges are not really strong engines of economic mobility. And so really thinking about what does that mean? What is upward mobility mean? Is earning enough to enter the fourth income quintile bracket within 10 years? So overall nationally, that's 42,000. That might be higher here, because I would think at 42,000, you probably can't buy a house. Right? Maybe if you're both earning 42, maybe, I don't know, you know, I haven't looked at, I didn't do any, I didn't do any real estate shopping.
Seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's like California's crisis.
Really, really.
So, but there's more about boosting upward mobility, right? It's power and autonomy, control over your life, right? Being able to make decisions for yourself instead of having others make them for you, being valued in the community. And feeling that respect and dignity and sense of belonging. Many of the things that you talked about this morning reminds me a lot of the work that we're doing with tribal colleges, Achieving the Dream. So this was a project success was funded by some private philanthropy money and the Department of Education. It's just winding down and there's, there's hopefully going to be another phase. But achieving the dream has more to grade so much from working with the tribal colleges. And I have this distinct honor of working with one for the last year and I've learned just such a, such an enormous amount from them. Like their, their true mission, their community, their focus on preserving their culture, very much what I heard the conversation here about, right? They, they might have layered on top of that a language and then, you know, that, but economic mobility and prosperity is just as important for them. So really thinking about sort of a, a shift from Achieving the Dream's roots, where they started talking about students of course, they moved into teaching and learning. They're now moving really focusing on community vitality as being the real outcome of education. How, how do community colleges continue to serve as that public learning? How do they reach deeper into communities to, to connect those traditionally disconnected populations? We're going to talk a little bit more about that and really authentically center at equity. So I think somebody said keep social justice in the conversation, that that needs to be another retreat. And I'm going to challenge you to keep that in your conversation separate, single time and not put it out here and say, we're going to talk about it separately. We're going to move it, we're going to move it to the center of our conversation. It's really hard to do that. It's really hard to do that, I'm going to tell you that. It's really hard to keep it always there. So, yeah, I, it's, it's a challenge and it's something that I hear in this room that you're already doing. So how are community colleges hubs of, of economic vitality? Understanding local opportunities in new ways, you start talking a lot about that. We have a whole rural initiative going as well in Achieving the Dream. One of the things that it's really focusing on is embedding digital skills into your curriculum. We talked a little bit about that, but also building, building strong partnerships and real partnerships that are partnerships for both the community college and the other agency. Ensuring access, we talk about access in a whole new way. And strengthening those high school pathways, you have a beautiful pathways project, you have a great opportunity here. Early momentum, some of, some of this is going to fly in the face of what we talked about this morning was, will be kind of a fun conversation. And then economic mobility, really thinking about what does that mean? And what does that mean for the different communities that you serve? So it might look very different in northern New Mexico than it does in San Antonio. And that's okay. You have to, you have to acknowledge that. So when we talk about expanding access. Go ahead, I'm sorry. You have to figure that. The historically disconnected populations, right? So this is coming from the McKinsey report in 2021. 10 million people between 60 and 24 not schooled enough. Or employed in something that's not recognized in the, you know, UI data or whatever, right? Where they're getting the data. So they could be self-employed or they could be entrepreneurs doing something. They all want to be YouTube stars. It's a true hip hop. Yeah, 25% of school graduates post home college. And so really think about that as the lost generation. So those who made it through high school during the pandemic, many of them said, I'm done. This whole virtual learning thing isn't working for me, I'm not going to a college that's doing that. I've had a lot of colleges tell me that they are now starting to see that return to college from that generation, those two, two or three years. And they're taking face-to-face classes. Seventeen million workers who are transitioning to new jobs. The Great Resignation, you might know what that is, right? You're probably experiencing some of that critical, critical shortages in faculty, especially in the health fields, nursing faculty. I've heard that. So hold on to the one you have. It's hard, hard to find them, okay. So we, Yasha, Yasha and I seem we're kind enough to share some economic information about Santa Fe, which is helpful to understanding. This is your population between 25 and 64 with a high school diploma and no college. And you look at the percentages and you can already see you have some equity gaps. Percentage of the people be, be low, 100% poverty, I race and ethnicity. This is 1980 to 2019, correct? Yeah. So again, we really see especially your native population, Latino population, and that is a pretty significant population. So how people identify being there, equal colored, Latino, et cetera, might be some combined groups. So what we call the working for, one of those people, we might be what we might know as Alice population. They're in between that sort of 100%, 200% of poverty. They qualify for some benefits, they don't qualify for all benefits, they're working their tails off, but they're not really making a living. They're not in that socioeconomic. And again, you can see where your disparities are. Not surprising. Is it surprising to anybody? So here's your, here's some of your opportunities and, and this is what some colleges across the nation have been doing. Really thinking about instead of pushing students to pulling students in, right? How do you, how do you? How do you, how do you go out and define what's the value proposition? I've been called just working on a new enrollment strategy where they are engaging every single person in the college as a recruiter. That could mean everybody. So I said, okay, what's your elevator speech? How are you going to share that in a way? And how are you going to provide the training so people feel confident if somebody asks them a question, I know they're direct. I know how to get them online to fill out that application. I know who they should talk to if they ask them this question. So you can't just say, we're going to do it, you have to give people the tools, right? And think about what's your elevator speech? And then the portfolio of programs that match the lifecycle of the student. So we know, I don't know about you, but my pathway was not a straight line. It was like happy, luck, whatever, I took a risk, I, you know, obviously had some opportunities that other people didn't have. But pathway through education point is not always a straight line. I'm a first-gen student as well. My parents wanted me to go to college, but they didn't know anything about that. So aligning your non-credit and credit programs into opportunities, you've got some great non-credit stuff going. How do you build that? How do you work together, go through silos, go across silos? I think I heard that, let's break down some silos. How do we give people credit for what they're learning in their non-credit or what they bring in terms of short-term? Take your learning out into the community. Florida, Broward looked at who was in their college and who was in their community, and they said, we have a whole group of people we're not reaching. And they said, we can't expect them to come to us, even though it's maybe a short bus, right? Doesn't seem like a lot, right? I'll tell you, in Green Bay, there's a river, the Fox River flows north, it's also one of the big cleanup zones, right? Don't drink the water there. I'm just kidding. But don't drink the water there. Don't eat the fish out of the river. People would not go across the bridge. Right? It was a very true phenomenon, even though we're very small. A thousand, two hundred thousand people in the whole metro area, they didn't go across the bridge. So thinking about how you get out into those communities, create some satellite opportunities, get them started, so they build some confidence, know who you are. And then really thinking about your enrollment models, collaborating with your partners. I can't say enough about how you collaborate with your community partners that are serving this population. They know the population, the population knows them, they've got the relationships already, you need to start helping integrate that. We worked a lot on that in my college, a lot. Increasing your MAFs of completion rates, helping students understand the opportunities. So this is just sort of where you look, where you're going. We're thinking about the future by 2050, 60% of the projection right now is 60% of the population of Santa Fe will be the Latinx, Hispanic, I think, is the preferred term here, and your white population will continue to shrink. Think about that. Santa Fe Community School graduates, so really that deep of a population dip? Or did you just have a whole group of people who didn't graduate? That's a question I have when I look at this. This is a huge drop, really. Was there that huge of a demographic drop in enrollment and in your, in your whole population? Or is that because they didn't make it through high school? Good questions to tease out. So you have, I'm not going to go through all your strategic priorities, I put them, I've embedded them in here, so you could see how you're connecting the dots right now. How I can see it with some help, I had some help from the internal books to make sure that we really were thinking about how are we, how, how is Santa Fe Community College reimagining access? So you have a lot of great things already, already. This was a reflection question, we're going to skip these, but you can come back to them as a group, you can come back to them as a leadership team when you have time. I think we got to most of this already. This is, this will be fun, this is momentum. So we talked about career, right? You guys are right on target. Are you, you're familiar with the Community College Student Engagement Survey? Do you do those?
We don't, we don't do them.
You don't do them, but you know what they are? Do you do NOLETS?
We do, we do NOLETS and government internal services.
So you have some information. The SUCI survey is pretty, pretty big and across the country. Seventy percent of the students met with an academic advisor before registering. I don't know if that ratio seems appropriate here. Only 20% said college member, college staff never helped them. Less than 50% said the staff person talked to them about what their jobs or program nature might lead to. And 76% of returning students met with an advisor once during a term, but most did not talk about what credits would transfer to baccalaureate programs. So what's, what's the level of transparency you have about transferring, right? And we know that transfer is owned by the four here or wherever they're going, but you need to know, right? You need to know what courses of yours are they taking and which ones are they not. We had a ton of students transferring to the University of Wisconsin, Green Bay, but they were taking, and they were taking, taking our credits. They were all, taking them all as electives or half, most of them as electives. We had to fix that, right? We had to fix that. So, okay. All right, I want to pursue more.
Yes.
Transfer, yeah, second. We had our, we had, we had identified three or four key transfer partners. We had them come on our campus and they actually, their advisors actually had hours, office hours on our campus with students who were in that transfer program or invited, sometimes forced. Students are optional, to meet with an advisor and understand how those credits are going to transfer, where they're going to be. So this is from the National Student Clearing House, really looking at the changes in program enrollment, thinking about fall 2020 is in blue, fall 2021 is in orange. The only places that they're, that they were seeing any kind of uptick in enrollment, mechanic and repair technicians, precision production. So it's kind of probably similar to what you're saying, people want jobs. They want to know how it's going to translate to a job, which is not to say that a baccalaureate doesn't, but you have to think about how that, how do you, how do you message that to students? I'm over the large readers. Okay. So thinking about momentum, early career exploration and pathway choice. Think about how many credits get lost if you change your mind? When you change your mind? I'm not going to pick on education, but I'll pick on education. Is that, that degree pathway, you change your mind, you don't start in education, you just added another year?
Yeah. For us, just so you guys know, we have, people are graduating with 30 extra credit dollars, that's a whole year.
Why is that important? They're burning up their financial aid, they're burning up their time, and they're less likely to complete. Okay. Go back there one, one second, I'm sorry. One of the things I want to think about, you guys were thinking about, how is this new co-rec model that you're, yeah, that you're bringing on board, you're bringing on board to get rid of some developmental opportunity? How does that provide opportunity for your students to take program courses? It's why they're here, it's what they want to take. How can they, when we did this work, it was very important that we identified a program level course that they could take when they entered the college, right? Extremely important, don't, don't skip that step, it's really important. Okay. So lots, lots of research, I know you all started from that. Thinking about why, why graduate earnings matter? Where do your programs fall in the workforce, low, median, high? How are, how is it leading to a living wage? What's a living wage in Santa Fe? It's good thing to find out if you don't know, and sometimes people don't agree to find out what that is. But where do they find, there, there's a tool, I think that's on the next slide, that seek, oh, this is yours, no, this is yours, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, yeah, let's talk about yours. So thinking about where are your students, what are your students graduating from and what kind of wages are they getting, right? So you have this information, it's thinking about how to analyze it, how to use it to make informed decisions. And this is where it's really difficult for community colleges everywhere, and it's such a dilemma, right? We need nursing assistants, we need them, we need early childhood educators, we need them, but we know that they're not making a living wage. So it's really a dilemma, how do you make it a pathway? How do you build that pathway? Because it's an essential service, so it's really, I, it's not an easy thing to just say, we're not going to do any of these anymore, because your community needs them, and you need them, right? And as I get older, we all, we all need them. So if you, if you disregenerate, where are your folks getting, what kind of occupations are they in and what do those wages look like? You can again, start having an equity conversation. Those are kind of complicated charts, so I'll let you, if you don't have this, I'm sure you can come back out again, so you can take a look at it, you might want to talk about it yourselves at some point in the future. So predicting early success, early momentum counts. A huge study by CCRC, Community College Research Center at Columbia. I always just want to say the right to Columbia. Really done a lot, a lot of work on this, thinking about first-year momentum and how strongly it predicts success in subsequent years. So one of the things that is probably really exciting to me about this is that it really helps with your equity gaps. EMN has been, been proven to really have one of the highest impact in closing those equity gaps. So you're measuring these, and at some point, Ash and his team can certainly educate the board more if you're not familiar with these. Credit momentum, sort of the anti-momentum metric is zero credit earned in the first term, very eye-opening to look at that. These are students who came to you, they were still here at census date, they completed nothing. F, W, D is a success?
No.
No. So, right? So for some reason, they didn't, they didn't get anything. I've seen it as high as, you know what yours is? I've seen it as high as 20%, sometimes more, of your students.
About 75% of our students get about C or nothing.
So you're at about 25% for zero credits?
Well, 0% I haven't checked.
You haven't looked at that? Okay. So that'd be one that you want to look at. And then you look at credit key momentum points, right? 15 credits earned, 30 credits earned, not really rocket science, you can go, the more credits you earn, the more you are going to complete, right? Really important. Gateway, level math, completion of college-level math, inclusion in the first year. So you're, you're working on this in your, in your placement redesign, but think about how you say, how you make sure that they can also take a program level course at the same time. That's really, really important, which is the program momentum and then persistence and things that you're already talking about, already looking at. Those are sort of the ones everyone's talking about. Student parent support is sort of a new angle for Achieving the Dream as well. I just did a pilot program with them this summer, piloting some new tools that they're using, and they're learning a lot through the pilot or pilot institutions about how colleges are trying to help students who are parents. The big, big challenge is it's very, very expensive. And so the numbers that, even though they're being really, really helpful and really supportive, the numbers of students they can support is really small, it's a fraction. One college that I worked with in Florida, 40%, up to 40, between 35 and 40% of their students were also parents. I don't know what your number is.
Same for us.
About the same? That's huge, huge. How are they doing, right? It's a good question that you should ask.
And if I just jump in really about it, you know, even this early momentum points is still a little too late, right? Because by the time it's in the semester, it's too late for us to do something about it. And so that's the reason in our recent CBA with the pack of union, we have that early grades report within the first three weeks of the class, so that we could come in there before it's too late.
Yeah. That's a real big piece of.
Zero credit earned here?
Yes. Around 30, but it could be more because.
Depends on where you're getting your info, right?
It's based on, yeah, it's based on our survey, we, we estimate around, well, who knows?
Self-reporting?
Yeah.
The college I was working with was using FACI data, but everyone doesn't do the FACI, so again, it's just, you know, it's really hard to get that information. And guess what? It happens to change. I'm not a parent when I start, but I might be a parent in my second year or third year, right? So really, some of this, I know you're already doing, but thinking about this, how you disaggregate your program enrollments and conditions, build programs, work floor skills, updating your academic maps, make sure your co-curricular is infused in there, it's part of the wording process. It's one of the ways that you work on civic duties, civic responsibilities and how you help students understand that, right? Infusing those 21st century skills into your genets, we like to sometimes call them digital skills. And then really thinking about how does this happen in the classroom, right? How do you help students, how do you help faculty become better at teaching? How do you help them create an environment that supports all students? Partners, we talked about that, advising, creating alternative pathways, all those different ways students come to you, how do you give them a credit for what they already know? And then aligning your professional development. So these are all things that people have done, you have a lot going on that supports this area as well. And then again, thinking about how you reflect on that. So economics and social mobility, maybe the area that's the newest for Achieving the Dream, understood, putting their, their work together on, we'll spend a little bit of time on that. Really thinking about how can fall secondary education ensure equitable attainment for students of color, students from low-income backgrounds, which might be a huge number of what you're serving as well, and how does this help your community, right? So why should the community invest in you? Because you're, you know, right? You're playing a central role in helping the community become more vibrant and meaningful. So socially, so just thinking about economic mobility and social mobility, and they are integrated, but they are not necessarily the same thing, right? So you can, if you, if you focus only on economic mobility and you're not thinking about the social mobility and how you empower and engage and embrace the communities, then it's, it's just part of the half, right? You don't have the whole. So moving from completion of a credential as the milestone to the work that they get, right? Is it a living wage? Is it viable? I see a lot of people nodding their heads. Medium wage in Santa Fe in 2019 is $15 a living wage. Theoretically.
Yeah.
According to.
We have, yeah, the city, living wage is $15.
And then this came from.
This was from just, yeah, from our work with MC.
MC? Okay. So this is a little bit dated, but not a lot dated, right? I'm thinking it was 2015.
This is, yeah, this is pretty old, 2015.
2015. I hope that it's changed, but I wouldn't be surprised that it hasn't changed a whole lot. So, and I'm sorry because you can't see the, I don't want you to. Sorry. We're seeing that, okay. So obviously, there you go, high school, less than a high school, high school certificate, associate degree, bachelors, right? Again, this is based on looking in the past, and you might be surprised that some people who are earning certificates are going to start jumping, jumping ahead of some folks with associate degrees, depending on that role. And then just a, if you haven't looked at this recently, the jobs that require a community college education and your medium wage. So as I mentioned before, CCRC has a tool that can help you evaluate your programs. I think I've sent it to you. It's a, it'll take some work, but I know colleges that have done it have found it to be really helpful. Just start thinking about not only where your programs lie in the workforce, medium, low, high, but also which students are taking them. So this is just a sample, this is not your college, but if you think about the structured transfer and then the unstructured transfer, and you see where students lie and then the unknown or undeclared, right? So those are the students who are obviously most at risk, but also the workforce low, which is in this light blue. but also the workforce low, which is in this light blue. And you look at who's enrolled in those programs, right?
What is structured, non-structured?
So a structured is I have an articulation agreement with this college I'm going to. I know these four, four, these five courses, these two years, hopefully two years of courses I take at your college are going to transfer in and I'm going to get full credit for them. Unstructured is I'm taking them and I'm hoping they're going to take them, right? A lot more work to do the articulation. A lot more work. And you know, you're not going to ever get everybody's, you know, dream articulated perfectly. But look at those high numbers. Where do most of your students transfer to?
Yeah.
What kind of programs are they in? How do you build that kind of articulation? It's very labor intensive. But we're good.
I also just think that the dynamic of the universities having all the power in that situation has changed recently.
Yeah, because guess what? Enrollment is falling just like yours is. Nothing like an enrollment crisis can make people want to work with you.
So I think community colleges are in a really good position to say, we have the students. What are you going to do for us?
Yep.
And but that mentality is important in those conversations.
Absolutely, absolutely. Our, our, our largest partner, four-year partner in our community really didn't listen to us much until we, until we started saying, this is how many of our students transferred you? And we were a technical college. We didn't have truly a transfer program. But we had obviously courses that transferred. And they're, and we, we tracked them and they're, they were doing better than our students. And then they said, we really need them because guess what? We lose whatever percent of our freshmen, don't come back. And we're using your students to fill our courses. So there's something in there, right? But it took a lot of work, a lot of work. With faculty meeting, with their faculty administrators meeting, with their administrators to build those certain pathways.
I'm thinking mandatory legislation that says community college credits aren't transferring. They can transfer into the degree.
Models of legal legislation, bearing a capable system where it is a guaranteed. If you notice.
Well, Wisconsin has that too. But let me tell you, it doesn't happen that way.
And we, we have a version of that also. They take them, but they go into this little electa pile.
Yeah.
And I have some lessons later essentials. They're good.
That'd be great.
That would be great. Great role for the board to play. So really thinking about community empowerment, civic engagement, how to create a better place. You keep on through these. I know that you've seen these. Really thinking about those critical partnerships. Start small. Start with the ones that are most important. Who's, who's your, who's your workforce development board? How, how are you partnering with them? They are a lot of underserved or underrepresented populations. And then thinking about what you have already in place that is part of your strategic plan and your strategic priorities. And then the next one really, I really like this slide because I like this approach. And I feel like this is, this is critical for who you are. This is your values. This is who you say you are. So really making sure that you're living that, right? How to do that is challenging. And then really, how can the board contribute to these goals, right? I mean, I think that the board has a unique role in their, in their place in the community, right? How do they do that? How do they provide that support and build momentum for, for the college to do its work, right? And support, support the college when they hear a lot of rumbling about a new admission strategy. Right? Okay, thank you. That's what I have. We have plenty. I wanted to make sure we had plenty for George to wrap up. And I do appreciate you inviting me. I swear this is a great deal of you.
Thanks for being here.
And how will George wrap up? Well, he will say this has been a great discussion. Thank you all for coming. I hope there's lots to think about. And I hope that we will all follow up in, in our various ways over the next years or maybe more recent, in more recent times. Lot of interesting issues, lot of important ones. Yeah. Getting to know our students, getting to know our community, probably a really critical piece in lots of different ways. To learn not only about the high school students, but also parents and what they're thinking about the college. And how are we reaching them? Those parents who are not coming out to parent meetings, you know? Not just blame them, understand, well, what's happening? Are we speaking Spanish at those meetings? Are we, yeah, what else are we doing? How are we reaching out to the community?
You have some great role models from here around the table, so. Part of it's that, right?
Yeah, great. Thank you all very much. Hope you enjoyed lunch. Sorry, the margaritas didn't quite make it.
Okay.